Good morning, everyone. I now call the April 11th, 2024 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. I'll now read our board commitment statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. I will now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this public work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the board clerk. After the board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the board clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout the meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rates of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Good morning, Ms. Martinez. Would you please provide the proof of publication for today's meeting?
Good morning, Madam Chair. The notice for the April 11th, 2024 work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on March 29th, 2024. Proof of publication has been attached to board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you. And we will now begin the work session with the Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Talbert Irving. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. It's great to see everyone, and I have one item on behalf of the superintendent. April is School Library Month, and we celebrate our school media specialists and their programs that transform learning. Some of the fruits of their labor will be seen during Friday night's Marion County Student Media Festival, right here in this auditorium. Madam Chair, if I may move on to the first agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm pleased to have Ms. Cook, who is here to introduce the update on funding programs and the guest with her today.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Cook.
Good morning, Chair Thrower, board members, and Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Talbert Irving. I'm here this morning to introduce Ms. Laura Lingle, Client Executive, and Mr. Thomas Bus, Market Leader of North Florida of Gallagher Benefit and Associates, who will be presenting the 2024 update and 2025 funding projections. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Thrower, board members, Deputy Superintendent. As Ms. Cook said, my name is Laura Lingle. I'm with Gallagher Benefit Services. I also have Thomas Bus and Peyton Drake with me from our office today. We will be providing an update on the self-funded health insurance program, in addition to some early projections for 2025, and, again, some recommendations for funding. Just a brief overview, and then we'll kind of get into the nitty-gritty of the funding of the self-funded health plan. So you can see in 2023, we did have per capita claims at about 12% higher than 2022. Much of these claims were anticipated based on medical trend and what we were seeing with the health plan. If you remember, we funded 2023 at an 8% increase over 2022. So that funding, in addition to some increased enrollment, actually allowed us to see some large gains. You'll see at 5.8 million. So the 12% increase that we experienced in Claims Fund was essentially offset by that increased enrollment, in addition to the 8% funding that the board approved for 2023. For 2024, the board approved a 4% increase in funding. Again, we are projecting another large gain at around 4 million. We did see increased enrollment, and we'll talk about that. But we are experiencing some higher-than-2023 claims for January and February. Again, those were anticipated. We did have some benefit enhancements that we'll review here in just a minute, but that we also saw that increased enrollment, again, due to the enhancements, the decrease in cost for the family coverage for those employees that do not have a spouse also employed by the district. So just a reminder of those benefit enhancements, we added a $75 specialist co-pay to Plans 1, 3, and 4. Plan 2 is an HSA-compatible plan. The IRS has some regulations on those types of programs, and so we're not allowed to have co-pays as first-dollar benefits on that plan. Plan 1, which is the board-funded plan, also has the highest enrollment. We did decrease deductibles for single to 2,000 from 2,500 and to 4,000 from 5,000 for family coverage. Plan 1, this is probably the biggest enhancement and where we will see the largest impact in claims, but we cover brand medication now on Plan 1. So previously, it was a generic choices formulary. There were a limited number of government-required brand medications that were covered. Now we do have that closed formulary that covers a significant number of brand medications at the Tier 2 co-pay. We did exclude those self-administered specialty medications on this plan. And then, again, we decreased the family coverage payroll per pay period deduction for any employees that do not have a spouse also employed, as they're already receiving the discount. So we did see significant enrollment increases, particularly because of that decrease in funding or increase in funding, decrease in payroll deductions. As we look at the reserves, so with the self-funded health plan, you are required by the state to show a 60-day safe harbor. Essentially, if the self-funded plan were to go away and you went back to fully insured, you would have to have 60 days' worth of Claims Fund to facilitate any runout in claims. So you can see that at the end of 2023, we have 19.2 million. Those are Gallagher's numbers. The board is showing about 19.7. It's probably just due to a difference in timing, when the claims hit, when the claims are paid, et cetera. Your 60-day safe harbor requirement is 9 million. So you can see that we are meeting and exceeding that safe harbor number. With the projections for 2024, that 4 million that we're projecting will be at 23.3 million. Again, our 60-day safe harbor will be at 9.7. Many of the self-funded plans for government entities, public entities, do try to target a 90-to-120-day reserve. Again, we are meeting and exceeding that 120-day mark. It just goes to show you've approached the self-funded plan conservatively. You've funded when the funding was recommended, so that we do have the funds if we are to have a poor claim year. It would be more of a bump in a row versus that it would ruin the self-funded health plan. So, again, conservative approach has yielded great results. Pull out those bifocals for this next slide. This is the 2021 to 2025 experience, again, forecasting a little bit into next year for the 2025 plan year. Just as a reminder, under our self-funded health plan, we have essentially two categories where the funding is. We have the Claims Fund, so that top section is our medical claims and pharmacy claims. What do we believe we would need to fund to pay the medical claims? Right now, your pharmacy is embedded in the medical plan. There is the option to separate the pharmacy from that. We'll be going to RFP. We'll talk about that in a minute for the Pharmacy Claims Manager next year. Under the fixed costs, the fixed costs include the stop-loss premiums. Under a self-funded health plan, we pay the claims up until a certain point on any given member. If that member exceeds that claim threshold, the stop-loss carrier then takes over payment for that. We project 15% every year for what the stop-loss increase will be. However, stop-loss is a little tricky. We don't actually get to negotiate stop-loss carriers and premiums until October, November for the following year. So we are projecting 15%. Last year, we were able to negotiate those numbers, and we got that number to about 5%, just over 5% increase on the stop-loss premium. Then we also pay administrative fees. These are paid to Florida Blue on a per employee or per member per month basis. This is to utilize their network. This is also to utilize them as our third-party claims payer. So essentially, they are paying the claims, and we reimburse them for those claims out of our Claims Fund. We also have some small internal expenses. This is just what we anticipate. If you were having somebody other than the risk management team facilitate the health plan, what would that cost if you were using an outside source? So you can see our total expenses there. And then when we look at what the employee contributions and the board contributions are, you'll see that's where we're getting our projected claims gains. So 5.8 million from 2023 into 2024, and the projected 4 million into 2025. When we look down at the bottom under key assumptions, you'll see that there's some medical trend and pharmacy trend. Again, this is what Gallagher anticipates the cost of doing business in the world of medicine will increase year over year. So you can see that medical trend is set at 7%. Pharmacy trend, 9.5%. Pharmacy really is where we're seeing the largest impact in claims. We have some medications that are $15,000 to $20,000 per month. So you can see that trend is increasing at a higher rate than even the medical trend of itself. You'll also see the increase in total contributions is listed there. 8% in 2023 that we discussed, 4% for 2024. You will notice that the 2025 numbers are based on a 0% rate increase. So the board has gotten to the point where Gallagher feels confident that you could keep the funding the same. You'll see in our next slide, we have a, we do have a recommendation. But the 2024 contributions from the board and from the employees, we believe, would facilitate the claims for 2025. You will notice in 2025, under projected gains or loss, if you did keep the funding stable, there would be slightly over $100,000 loss. Again, when we looked at those safe harbor numbers, that would still keep you well in the 120-plus days of Claims funding available, but that is based on a 0% increase for 2025. Any questions on these numbers?
Any questions from the board? Board Member Cummings?
Still waiting.
Well, thank you. I just don't want to, I always want to remember to acknowledge you in the phone. Okay, thank you.
So again, based on the preliminary experience, we will be coming back with updated numbers next month, as we're only able to project based off of January and February. So we'll have another month and a half or so of claims for next month. If you were to keep funding stable, we would still meet that safe harbor, but we would experience a projected loss of around $100,000. With that being said, we also recommend padding the war chest when the years are good. So our recommendation would be to consider a 3% to 4% rate increase or contribution increase effective January 1st, 2025. With self-funded health plans, we usually do see a bad claims year one year out of every five. So we would want to be ready for that, should that come. So, again, we'll be back next month with some additional information, maybe updated recommendations based on what we're seeing for March and early April claims. Risk management is extremely busy this year with claims audits and RFPs. So Stacy Roth and her team are facilitating a medical claims audit. This is recommended every three years when you are a self-funded health plan. Essentially, the audit is looking at how the policy is written compared to how the claims were paid. So did the claims pay appropriately? And we're also doing a dependent audit. So this is something that we did even before we were self-funded, but even more important now. Are the dependents that are on the school board's plan eligible for the plan? We, they do this during initial enrollment, but then we also facilitate this for any member that has a dependent on their plan, so a spouse or a child dependent. So they are requested to provide documentation that they are a legal spouse and that the children on the plan are their legitimate children. It just protects the plan from paying for claims for people who are not eligible for the plan. In addition to that, we are currently in RFP for Delta Dental. We had our first meeting on Tuesday, and we will be doing interviews next week for a contract for the dental insurance. We are also facilitating the RFP for the short-term and long-term disability that is currently through the standard, as well as the basic and voluntary life also through the standard. And then every year, we do the stop-loss. Again, that will happen in the fall, once we have those numbers from the current stop-loss carrier. You'll see next year, we'll be going to RFP for Health Plan Administrative Services, which is currently held by Florida Blue, Consulting Services, which is our team, and then that Pharmacy Benefit Manager Program that I referenced before. So currently with Florida Blue embedded right now, but we do have the ability to carve out that piece if it makes financial sense. And then we get a little break, 26 for 27, and we just have the Vision RFP, which is currently with Humana. In preparation for the dental RFP, we did a survey. We found that when we did the survey for the health insurance, we received a lot of positive feedback. We also received a lot of constructive criticism that we used to then develop the benefits for the health plan. So these were the responses from the survey, just over 683% of those that responded are currently enrolled in the dental insurance. We asked some questions about their network, what kind of coverage they would like to see, maximums, et cetera. We also get a lot of feedback about adult orthodontia, so we did ask some questions about that and increasing maximums as well. And then we had 245 open responses. Those are always exciting to read. Here are the results. You can see that the dental network came in as most important. It is what we frequently hear the most about, as far as dissatisfaction with the dental insurance. Then comprehensive coverage on all plans, increased maximums came in, close second and third, improved for out-of-network, and then adult orthodontia. So when we created the RFP, we used the responses from the survey to target questions at those areas for respondents to reply to. Looking ahead, so as I indicated, we will be back next month with some additional claims data, final recommendations for rating, and increased contributions from the board. And then we will also be looking in June and July for the RFP approvals. So if we, what we decide on for the carriers for those three RFPs that I mentioned previously, we'll be looking for your approval on those.
All right. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you. I have no comments at this time.
Okay. We'll open it up to the board for discussion. Who'd like to lead us off? Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Lingle, for your presentation. It's been a pleasure to serve on this insurance committee for the past couple of years. My question with the dental insurance survey and just collaborating and having communication with many of our local dentists, there seems to be a challenge, I guess, with our local dentists and insurance providers at this point, and many of them are choosing to go out of network. And so seeing the results of this survey indicating that having in-network dentists is a significant idea that our employees really would like to see, should we move forward with whatever we're going to do? And I know that you're doing interviews, and so whatever happens, I just, I think there is an opportunity certainly for ample communication to our employees as to how local dentists who are out of network will still work. Because I see that, you know, how you ask the questions here, certainly, everybody wants everybody to be in-network. They want that. But the challenge is our local dentists are choosing not to be. And so with that being said, that's not necessarily our challenge, but it is something that can be overcome through some communication. So that, that's just a comment. It's not really a question, but if you have something else to add. Yes, most certainly. And it is a trend that we're seeing, not just with the, the school board's dental insurance and their carrier, is that dentists are leaving dental networks. They're going to a fee-based program, or they will file for you as an out-of-network dentist. I think most certainly, a communication effort is warranted. We are looking at what, what could be done to enhance an out-of-network benefit, so that if they choose to go out of network, what would that look like in reducing their overall costs? It, it does challenge the experience of the dental program. If, if we improve the out-of-network so significantly, then it doesn't encourage them to stay in network, that will negatively impact the, the plan. So it's a fine balance. We want people to see the value in the dental program if they do choose it, but it is something that we're seeing, again, not just with the school board's insurance, but just across dental insurance in general, is the number of dentists that are leaving networks.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Member James?
Thank you for coming and sharing your expertise. I just have a quick question about dental insurance. Coming from a family that has traditionally not always had a job that provided a standard insurance, we have always had to seek other ways to get health insurance and dental insurance. And my family doesn't have dental insurance. We use a plan called Dent Right, and I don't know if you all are familiar with the plan, but there are providers in our community that accept Dent Right, and it's $150 for the year for me to have the plan to cover my whole family. And then it's like $25 for cleaning. So I don't know if that is something that we could look into as a potential opportunity for our employees. Maybe we covered that cost. I don't know how much we pay right now for this dental insurance plan, but potentially, this could even be a cost-saving measure for our, for our employees if this was something that would fit. So having, that's what I've, my personal lived experience has been with dental insurance, and it has helped, it does help cover the cost for other more significant things than cleanings, like root canal or wisdom teeth or whatever. So that's just a recommendation I would ask if we could look into, and if it's a nonstarter, that's totally okay, too. But I know that anyone in the community who doesn't have dental insurance, Dent Right is a, like a discount plan, and that's what we use in my house, so.
Yeah, we could most certainly look at what it would, what it would look like to offer, as you said, a discount program. The, the board doesn't contribute to the health insurance in any way for the employees. It's a completely voluntary program. So it, it really is impacting the employees, you know, not the, the district's bottom line when.
You mean the dental insurance?
Correct. The board does not, it's 100% voluntary, so the, the board doesn't fund any portion of that.
Of the dental insurance?
Of the dental insurance currently.
But if we have a program that people can't afford or can't use, then potentially looking at an alternative option.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
And I guess then my next question would be, what is the limiting factor for us to provide it to our people? There's none, other than maybe Dent Right would provide a discount to us if we offered it in a large package, right? That would be the only, otherwise, people could just go out on their own right now and get Dent Right.
Correct. We would have to see what Dent Right allows if they do have a package deal for something like a school district, or if it's simply just an offering that they say, well, you could, you can offer this, but there's nothing different than if an employee went out on their own. Yeah, we would have to look into that.
Okay. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. And yes, maybe there is a little power in numbers, so it'll be fun to hear what you find out on that. Vice Chair Conrad?
I just have a quick comment. I want to thank you for your presentation, and also want to thank you for the deeper dive into dental insurance, because it came up as something our staff was struggling with. And so thank you for the survey and collecting information to share with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad. Board Member Cummings, anything from your seat?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, guys, for dealing with this this morning, with me being away. As always, I appreciate the presentation this morning that we get concerning our medical benefits and our dental benefits. However, and I've asked this before, and I'm going to ask again, I continue to ask, that when we look at these medical plans and just with plans, that we have more options, our employees deserve more options than just one, just Florida Blue. I'm asking that we continue to look for other companies that, I believe that competition bring down prices. And I think that we need to look at some other companies that could possibly offer some plans to us, and yet I have, I've yet to see that yet. So I'm asking that we look at some other plans. Dr. James just mentioned something about dental. I think when we have those options for our employees, it makes our employees more, it gives them, gives them a better opportunity to use the benefits of it, yeah, by being employed this year. So are there, are there any plans, or have they looked at other insurance companies other than Florida Blue?
So for the health insurance, that will be next year. So the RFP, we're coming to the end of the current contract with Florida Blue. When, when we look at offering multiple carrier plans, for example, if you offered a plan through Florida Blue and a plan through United at the same time, carriers are very leery of quoting on a setup like that, because they don't know how many employees would choose the Florida Blue plan versus the United Healthcare Plan. It's very rarely seen that an employer would offer plans through two different carriers. But Florida Blue, the, the ASO plan, will be going out to bid RFP next year. So hopefully, we can drum up some competition so that we can get the best plans available for the employees. And then with the dental RFP, we did have five carriers bid on that RFP. So we are currently, again, we reviewed those on Tuesday. We will be interviewing the five carriers next Tuesday to then come up with some finalists for the final. Again, most of the carriers indicate, indicate that their rates and their benefits that are offered are based on them being the only carrier for the insurance program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Cummings, and I just wanted to share my gratitude to, to all of you and also Board Member Campbell for the good work. You know, every year that you come before us, invariably, you've brought forward very good news. And I know that it's been a partnership with the board and our willingness to step out there with, with the self-funded, but it's really nice to know, again, that we're very financially healthy, that also great negotiation on the stop-loss on, on our behalf. I'll look forward to the recommendation, you know, next month, what we should be doing there. And then also just hearing proactive recommendations, you know, for, for future program participation. We've had Blue Cross for years, and there's a reason for that. You know, there just hasn't been another really good option. You know, in my mind's eye, I'm thinking, well, gosh, you know, we have several other government entities orbiting around in this community. Maybe if all of us banded together, we could do something. But I know it's almost never that simple. But this board's always interested in, in options and choices and innovative opportunities. So never hesitate to, to bring them to us, and, and we'll at least consider it. So that's really all I have. Is there anything else for the good of the cause on this one? Okay. Hearing none. Okay, hearing none, is there any public comment? All right, hearing none. Thank you again for your great work on our behalf.
Thank you.
All right.
We're pleased to bring up Mr. Ayers, our director, as he will do the annual reports by charter schools.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Ayers. Always good to see you.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, Board Members, Dr. Talbert Irving, Ms. Lina Martinez, Martinez, and Attorney Powers. I'm here today to do the annual report for charter schools. The annual report for charter schools is required by state statute. There's no action required by the board on this, but it is required that each charter school do a presentation to the sponsor. Our four, our five charter schools are here today to do the presentation. This is the order that will come in, come up, and so I'm pleased to introduce Michelle Axon. She's the principal of Marion Charter School. At the end of each charter presentation, you'll be able to ask questions, and then at the end of the presentation, I can ask, answer any general questions you may have.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Heard and heated, well, we'll see.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Powers, Ms. Martinez, good morning. I am Marion Charter School, and this is our 23rd year in operation. We are kindergarten through first, uh, fifth grade, excuse me. Our school mission has not changed. We want to recognize and respect the uniqueness of each and every single child at our school, and we want to foster a love of learning in, in all students. We also celebrate diversity and strive to instill integrity, compassion, and confidence in each and every child. We give each child support and encouragement to become his or her own unique self. Our student population this year, we have two of every grade levels, except for this year, we have three second-grade classrooms, so we have a total of 229 students at our school. You can see that we do have a diverse population at Marion Charter School. We have, we have students with disabilities, we have ESOL students, so the numbers are there for you. Our personnel data, we have 14 teachers who hold professional certification. We have one teacher who has a temporary certification, and our salary ranges is from $27,000 to $96, uh, $96,000. We do provide all employees with health insurance and Florida retirement. We own our own buildings. Right now, we have two portable buildings, and we are starting the process this summer into, looking into building a permanent structure on our land, which we own. So our financial information, last year, our audit showed that our total expenses is being $2,091,000, and our revenues were $1,928,000, which resulted in a slight decrease of $162,901. That was due to increased costs of personnel, supplies, but we are financially stable. Again, we do own our own property, and it is currently valued at $1,633,953. So at Marion Charter School, our instructional delivery method is that every day, first thing in the morning, from 8:15 to 9 o'clock, we have our Tier Two and Tier Three time. Our Tier Three students go to a reading endorsed teacher for remediation, and the other teachers provide Tier Two instruction, as well as enrichment for the students in their classroom. We have an aide at every grade level that works between the teachers, and they provide, again, support for our students. Our aides have a small window of time where they do what we call clerical work. The majority of their day is spent supporting the teachers with our student instruction. We have six teachers who do tutoring before and after school for our students, to, again, to provide them with any academic needs that they may have. We do have a consecutive hour every single day for our teachers of planning time, so when this teacher has PE, her grade-level partner has computer lab with the aide. So they have an hour of planning time every single day, and that's where we, I go in and I talk to them about their scores. We brainstorm ideas of how to increase student academics. We use that time for PMP meetings, so again, they do have that one hour of planning time every single day. Our student achievement data, last year, we were a C. We missed being a B by four points, but we're striving for a B or an A this year. And again, our teachers and our staff are working so hard with our students to fill in any gaps that they may have in their education. So this is just some district progress monitoring assessment data. If you look for third, fourth, and fifth grade, we compare Marion Charter to Marion County. We are above Marion County or right at Marion County in regards to our district progress monitoring data. And this is our school-wide FAST data for PM One and PM Two. We have grown exponentially from PM One to PM Two, and we're going to hopefully continue to show growth for PM Three. So our goals for this year is to continue to work on closing the learning gaps by providing daily remediation to all of our students in reading, math, and science. And again, our teachers and our pairs work with our students to review and reteach key standards and lessons that were taught previously. So again, our progress towards our goal, we're going to continue to provide intense reading and math remediation and enrichment activities and opportunities for our students on a daily basis. So what makes Marion Charter School successful? We like to look at it as a three-legged table. We have our parents, our staff, and our students. First, oops.
It didn't do our.
No, it just skipped right to, okay, well, we had this whole slide that was included of pictures of our parents, but again, regardless of whether we're having open house, or our character dress-up day, our Dr. Seuss literacy night, or field day, all of our parents try to come out and support our school and their children, and again, it is so important.
Maybe if you keep scrolling, you'll be able to broadcast what we were able to see.
Okay.
You can go one more.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, well, this is the end of our, our staff slide. The slide that we sent, we had pictures of our parents, and then this is the end of our staff slide, but again, our staff, they go above and beyond what is asked and expected of them, so that they can provide the best education possible to our students. They put their heart and soul into creating robust and engaging lessons for our students. And then we have our students. So these are just some pictures of our students engaging in some lessons. One of the things that our third-grade class does is they hold a book tasting activity, so this is part of a reading activity that they do every year. And these are just some slides of our students working. And out, one of our third-grade classes, they were scheduled to go to the nap-in at Silver River, but unfortunately, it was canceled due to weather, so last minute, we threw together our own nap-in session. So we had, the kids made pottery, they did gem mining, we had archery, where we bought the Nerf bows with the Velcro arrows, so they got to participate in that. They did, they cracked open their own GOs. So at the last minute, you know, our staff and I, we pulled together, and we provided this opportunity for our students. And one of the things that I love is we have our older students come down to our lower grades and be reading buddies with them. And every year, we also have some high schoolers that come and they read to our students, and this is one of our former students, Jacob, who came back and wanted to read with one of his favorite teachers. So it's wonderful for the, for the kids to see, hey, you know, high schoolers are coming to read to us, and they really enjoy that. So again, I just wanted to share with you what makes Marion Charter so special, and you guys are welcome at any time to come out and visit us. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No comments at this time.
Okay, and we will open it up to the board. I just have, Board Member James?
Just a brief question. Thank you for your presentation and what you're doing for the community. When you look at your enrollment, what, how has your enrollment looked from, we'll just talk post-2020, so from like last year to this year, and then when you're looking at your projections for next year?
It's steadily increasing. Last year, or actually for this year, we've had a waiting list, and so we've already started preparing for next year, and kindergarten is one of our largest enrollment opportunities, so, but right now, we're looking at a full house for next year.
Okay, and would you say that most of your students feed into O'Callaghan Charter Middle, or do they go to a variety of middle schools when they leave you?
Most of our students do go to O'Callaghan Middle, but then we do have some that go to their base middle schools.
Okay, and when you look at your, you obviously, you, you talked about how you didn't quite have the revenue to cover the costs for this year, and so as you go into planning for next year, and, and as the board, and this is something I'm going to bring up probably with every person who comes forward today, the board has requested a sales tax for the November ballot, which would legally we'll have to share with charter schools, and so obviously, that would support some of your needs, but is there anything that you all are doing differently to try and address that position that you were in for this fiscal year?
Well, last year, we haven't, we didn't receive funding for the grants, so this year, we have turned in, you know, all of our paperwork, so we did get a lot of our grant money.
Okay.
So, yes, ma'am.
So just pretty much tied to the grant money?
Yes, ma'am.
And obviously, we are feeling the pain of no more COVID money, as all of you guys will feel as well, and so the implications for that as we head into the 24, 25 school year will be, will be, you know, a question, right? Because we're used to an influx of money, and while it's less because you all are smaller than we are, we are all feeling the pain of having to close the gaps and what supports we put into place. So just making sure that we're all very aware of what may need to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Campbell?
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Axon. Time and time again, when you come to deliver information about your beautiful little school there, it's just wonderful progress that these students are, are making, and just always continued success that you have there, and wonderful stories come out of your little school. So just grateful for the work that you're putting in and the student successes that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Vice Chair Conrad?
Just adding, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for the work that you're doing and the opportunities that you're giving to our students.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Board Member Cummings?
Thank you, great presentation. Looking forward to seeing what's going to happen out there.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and, and yes, Principal Axon, you have been a great partner, and a few things that stood out to me was having all of your teachers in field. That is such a blessing and a testament to what you're doing, and, and I'm also seeing from the photos that you have a much older student coming back to read at his favorite teacher's class, so obviously, you have some teacher longevity.
We do, we have. It, it's so nice, because, you know, the students in middle school and high school, you know, early release days, they like to come back and, and see, you know, the teachers and to say hi, and to let us know how they're doing. So we actually had one yesterday after school to stop by and wanted to see Mr. Eggers, so.
That, that really, that's part of, a big part of why we do what we do, right?
Exactly.
That's wonderful. Thank you for being a steady and consistent charter partner.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Best of luck.
Thank you, Marion Charter. Up next is Mr. David Friedlander with MacIntosh Area School.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dr. Gullett and school board members. It's a pleasure to be here this morning, but I'd like to introduce members of our team, so to speak. This is Mrs. Colleen Beals, who's our curriculum specialist, and this is Mr. Jonathan Ward, who is our board member representative today, and also our, our board treasurer. As a Florida School Choice program, I am proud to present the Charter School Annual Update for the MacIntosh Area School. We continue to focus on academic rigor, financial stability, and growth. And I must add also that we are celebrating our 20th year in operation as well. As a result of our credible, incredible staff and student academic performance last year, turning our grade around two letter grades, we won the State of Florida School Recognition Award and funding. We are very proud of this and continued support performance of the learning model we have implemented last year. You have our reports, so what I wanted to do today was just give specific progress by grade and subject, and to highlight a few key, key areas. The collaboration and departmentalized approach for student instruction is continuing to provide staff and teachers multiple opportunities to track student data, provide interventions, provide tailored instruction, increase academic rigor, and expand student engagement. The students respond well to this approach. Student benchmark data and goals are monitored daily and discussed weekly to allow teachers to make any necessary changes to their instructional strategies and content, content based on the students' needs, along with family engagement and feedback. This approach has increased student confidence, combining academic challenges with fun incentives to encourage student learning and completion of benchmark mastery. The students are actively engaged and work collaboratively in developing their learning goals. They are motivated to meet their goals individually and as a team. Students in kindergarten through second grade, based on the latest STAR reading assessment, depicts 47% of our students scoring in the 50th percentile or higher. Students are progressing in a positive trend with a high likelihood of meeting the projected goal of 50% of students in grades K through 2 scoring in the 50th percentile ranking or higher. Currently, students in kindergarten through second grade, based on the latest STAR math assessment, have depicted 37% of students scoring in the 50th percentile or higher. Students in grades 3 through 5 are working towards their goals of achieving proficiency scores in both reading and math. According to the Winter Fast Progress Monitoring Assessment, students are demonstrating scale, score, growth, and an increased likelihood that 33% or more will achieve a Level 3 or higher. 33% of students in grades 4 and 5 are projected to achieve learning gains in math, and 67% are projected to achieve gains in reading. However, these gains will not be contributing to the overall school grade calculation for Mass, for MacIntosh, as a result of low class enrollment for these grades. We anticipate maintaining a C for this academic year based on assessments thus far in school grade calculation guidelines that will omit learning gains in the overall scoring calculations due to the category. due to the category minimum student count requirements. Therefore, we anticipate being scored solely on student proficiency at a level three or higher. For the 26, 27 school year, however, our goal is to achieve an A grade. Our Macintosh VPK program, which is in its inaugural year, is doing quite well. The academic program starts with learning the ABC letters, both uppercase and lowercase, along with their sounds. Students have mastered these skills and in January, tested above the Marion County Benchmark using the STAR Early Literacy Assessment. They are now blending sounds to read three-letter words and using sight words to help with fluency. In January to May, we are working on reading sentences using sight words and words they can out, they can sound out as well as beginning to learn long vowel sounds and word endings. By the end of the school year, based on their current performance levels, we project our VPK students who have mastered the necessary pre-kindergarten skills and ready to enter kindergarten in August 2024. Our aftercare program continues to provide our working families with a safe and nurturing after-school option with USDA-approved snacks and guided homework time if needed. This year in addition, we partnered with Macintosh Seedling and Gardening Club, who established a very successful gardening program for our students. Club volunteers meet weekly with our students and staff to teach them how to properly maintain and cultivate our school garden while learning science through hands-on experience. This program has been promoted throughout the entire Macintosh community and is thoroughly enjoyed by our students and their families. We continue to operate our Runners Club program, which meets weekly, and our After-School Art Club, which are both very popular activities for children at all grade levels. Academic performance, student growth and parental engagement has directly contributed to our enrollment goals. Enrollment recommitments are above the two previous years with 90% of our K through four population returning for the 24, 25 school year. Additionally, our VPK program has been a feeder as hoped, and 100% of the VPK kindergarten eligible students have committed to our school for next year. Planning for the Summer Enrichment Program, offering enrichment activities geared towards topics not traditionally offered during the school year is underway. Last year's study of flight from animals through to aviation was a great success that included classroom learning, guest speakers, field trips, and even a US Air Force pilot leading the students in fundamental of flight. And this year's program, we expect, will be equally exciting. While rebuilding academics and enrollment, progress continues on the financial front. It has been a lean year and as discussed last fall, we consolidated classes and reduced staff expenses while still maintaining competitive salaries, benefits, expertise and learning standards. We aggressively pursue grant applications and reimbursement, lowering costs and fundraising. By the end of the fiscal year, we will receive outstanding reimbursements for our Title I program, approximately 17,000. ESER III will be ending this year, totaling approximately 101,000. UNISIC funds totaling approximately 21,000 and approximately 170,000, as well as the tax ERC reimbursement of approximately 40,000. We overhauled our website and social media while working with a marketing service to proactively extend our reach throughout the broader community and increase access to detailed information about our school as a school of choice for area families. In summary, we remain 100% committed and invested into the future growth and success of Macintosh Area School. MAS will continue to be a contributing asset and active participant within the Marion County School Community and committed to provide a choice to families in the northern portion of Marion and the southern portion of Alachua Counties. We want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Friedlander. All right.
No comments at this time.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and open it up to a board discussion and comments. Who'd like to lead us off? Oh, Board Member James?
Hi, thank you for coming and sharing.
Pleasure.
Sharing everything that's going on. Um, I have a few questions similar to what I've asked others. So, um, and it occurred to me as you were talking that I could just go back and look at the attendance report. So that's what I did so that you guys don't have to pull numbers. I'll just do that for you guys. But you guys ended the school year last year with 44 students and started this school year with 44 students and currently have 34 students enrolled. So you've lost 10 students this school year. Um, and while the, uh, how many VPK students do you have enrolled?
Currently, four.
Four. So on 2/29, it was five and, and now it's four. And so those four students, if they take the five spaces of the fifth graders, you'll be in a net negative one position. So you'll have 33 enrolled students if every single student at your school stays and those four VPK students. So my concern continues to be the enrollment. And while there is enough revenue coming in right now from special revenue sources, those are, those are done. And we all are going to experience the implications of that. And it looks after, and I, I asked to meet with our finance department because it's not my area of expertise to understand balance sheets and all of that. But my concern is that when, in a year from now, when the COVID money and the ERC money is gone, you will not be generating enough revenue to cover the expenses attached to it for the students that you have enrolled. And so my greatest question is about the enrollment. And what is the plan to increase the enrollment so that you all are in a position where you can sustain? Because obviously I understand you can get a private donation, you can have those other things come in to continue to sustain the school financially. But if that doesn't happen, when, when the COVID money runs out in a year from now, what is the plan?
We've, we've started, actually, we started last year. We've been working, um, in addition to fundraising. First of all, that's something we've increased and we have a very successful fundraiser with, within the town and that we build off of. But, um, we also have begun working with our real, local realtors. Uh, the demographics of the community have changed, um, over the last several years. And not for any reason of the school, just that the, the, the job market and the housing market have all taken impact on local, on people moving in and out, um, which happens to be the trend up in that area. We do intend to, we've reached out to our, our realtors. We've worked with them trying to develop more outreach, um, in sources from them. As well as, like I said before, we've changed our marketing strategies. We've actually worked with a, uh, increased our social media so that the outreach for that is a greater distance. You know, we are promoting within the churches, the local areas. We're working with the church communities. Our events are actually in their facilities, in their programs. So we space it out. So we try to get more awareness out there, um, collaborating with the town and with other communities to try to, um, become more aware or have communities more aware of who we are. We do believe that our preschool feeder program or VPK program, this was the first year and it didn't get really started officially until later on. So we are now on the Early Learning Coalition's website as a choice, as a provider up in that area. And there aren't that many. So we are constantly, and we already have reg, people intending to register for VPK for next year. We do intend to increase that number for VPK. And as I said, 100% of the, our, our kindergarten, our VPK kids this year have registered for kindergarten for next year, which is a start. We actually have, um, people reg, registering or looking to register for VPK. But also, as I said, the, the whole point of having a single school for VPK through grade five is, is our intent to grow. We recognize that the challenges, um, we do have our projected enrollment, even though we have 32 students committed now for next year. So our goal is to, we recognize 62 is a number that we have to shoot for, for financial stability. However, we're looking at 50 right now and we should, we are very optimistic that we will get those numbers.
So thank you for sharing that. And so, um, first, my question is, and as I met with finance, we had this discussion. The projection has always, the last year or two at least, has been higher than what the actual enrollment was. And so we, as a school board, wound up paying more for more students than what showed up at the beginning of the year. And we always settle that up by the end of the year. However, I would ask that your projection be more realistic. When's, when is the last time there were 50 students at Macintosh Area School?
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yes.
At the start of the school year?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So what my request is a board member who, because we are, we are sending that FTE money as a, as a front load. And the, the last two years, is my understanding, was we have front-loaded money for students that haven't arrived for school. And so then we're having to reconcile that. And from a business perspective, then you guys are getting way less money from us in the second half of the year. So that's my first request. My second request is that I, I love the pre-K program. I'm a huge early educator and I believe wholeheartedly in it. In October, when you guys came before us with regards to your audit, I asked the question, what is your break even for your pre-K program? And I've never received that answer. But I know that four students does not, there is no way that four students covers, um, the costs. And so do we know what that answer is?
I will get that for you.
Okay. Because if it is not covering the cost and it is not a part of your charter, then where is the money coming from to cover the pre-K program?
It is coming from our after-school program, which is not part of the FTE dollars.
Okay. Is the after-school program included though on the financial report that is uploaded here?
I have to get that. I'm not certain about that. I'll find that information for you.
Because it's serving your K5 population in addition to potentially your VPK population. So my, my concern as a board member would be that there is money coming from your K5 charter being used to support the pre-K program. And as a board, because I, but I know that four students is not supporting, there's not, there's not enough revenue coming in for that to cover the cost of your educator. So I would like to understand as we go into next year, because this year's annual report did not include pre-K, because this was for last year. So as you prepare the annual report and look at your financials for this year and come before the board, my request is going to be that it is very clear where the funding is coming from for pre-K and how that program is sustaining itself. And then secondarily, the K5 charter, because it is a tremendous feeder program. And if you have a program with 20 pre-K students, you would just be stockpiling your school full of kids. And that would be tremendous for the community. But that's not the state of affairs right now. And as a board member, it's my job to make sure that the finances, because that is what we do, are up to snuff. And so that is my request.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I do want to mention one other thing, though, um, at the start with the enrollment. We have had, when we start our enrollment, our year, we are not, we have our, our initial enrollment. And then when people start, we've had people leave. As I said, the demographics have changed. So families have left the area after school has started. So the enrollment then changes and then when you do your FTE counts, you're then dealing with those changes at that time. So, I mean, it, it is true, um, when we start our numbers, we have our actual enrollment. And for whatever reasons, families do leave and the numbers, the enrollment does change at that point. You also have incoming kids in between the FTE counts. So you have children coming in, children leaving, and so that is a fluctuation that we are dealing with constantly up there.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's something that we all experience. Um, in parts of our community, as Marion County as a whole, they just keep coming. The Sunrise Elementary, the number just keeps going up every single day. It just isn't, doesn't go in the other direction, right? And so we're experiencing the pains of that from our seat here. So I completely recognize all of that. But if you ended in May 30th at 44 and you started August 15th, which is like whatever, four days after school started at 44, that was not 50 or whatever the number was that the projection was. And so just my request is that it is a more realistic number.
We can work on that.
Thank you, Board Member James. Vice Chair Comeran?
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, my request is on the, um, the academic side. And I just, for ease of understanding and making some comparisons, I would love in your next presentation, if you would include also the district, our district averages with your average. In the previous presentation, we had, um, they did have a slide that compared, um, where their students are with the regular district. And that just makes it easiest for us to compare. So I'd appreciate that addition.
We can certainly add that in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Board Member Cummings? Thank you.
Uh, no comment. My board members have pretty much covered the concerns now. See, because I was concerned about the financials as well, but Dr. James did an excellent job of looking at those. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Board Member Campbell?
Sure, thank you. I, I think much of it has, has already been covered. The interesting position that a public school board is in when we're talking a public charter school, while we have some control, we really don't have any. And, and so what we can do is we can express our concerns and we certainly can come in and, and offer additional resources whenever you're in academic trouble, which you were. And so I'm grateful and congratulations, I guess, that you are no longer an F and have moved those 30 some odd students, potentially not that number. The third through fifth grade, maybe 15, 18 students that were tested last year that count towards your grade, up to that C. So, so that's, that's positive for sure. We do have the benefit of the historical attendance data. So I, I have gone back and seen 2021, it was 55, 50, but basically 55 students. 2022 is 53 students. 2023, we're down to 47. And then today, as Dr. James has expressed, we are at 34 students. And one thing that has also changed in that timeframe is we now have two administrators and only three instructional units. So part of the, and I understand we're also spending money on marketing and, um, financial solvency is, is a challenge. And, but again, this school board doesn't have that much authority over that. That, that is reliant on your board. And as a former nonprofit administrator, I understand the importance of that board. And actually, they are the owners of this entity and you're not. So perhaps at some point, it might even be beneficial for this board to actually meet with your board because they're the ones that actually are responsible. They're the ones that are signing all the information. I know you have a board member here. If he wants to stand up and share, that'd be great. I, I have significant concerns, as has been shared from other board members, about the financial sustainability of this school.
Yeah, we all are the same concerned. Um, but we are a professional board. We have people from, um, many different styles of business and we are looking very closely at the financials. And we're being very objective. We're not being subjective about this. So you can rest assured that we will not be going into a school year without knowing that we can come out of it at the other end, things like that. I would say though, that we came here each year and we talk about, um, you know, what we're doing and what we're trying to do at the school. And we always invite you guys to come up and see us. And last year you said, yeah, we'll come up and see you. We could maybe even use you as a seed organization so that we can do flexible things that bigger schools can't. We also raised issues about collecting meals. We're the only school, I believe, that is forced to collect meals. And because of our size, it's way more onerous on us than any other school. So we asked all these issues last year and we were told, oh, yes, we'll look into it. This will happen. As far as I know, none of that happened. So when Marion Charter School get up and talk about a three-legged stool of parents, staff and students, I was hoping there'd be a fourth leg, which is the school board. You know, that what can you do for us? How can you help us get the enrollment up? How can you help us, you know, improve the financial stability? How can you help us with transport? How can you help us with meals? These types of things. I'm hoping that the school board is more supportive than just asking questions of us. Because we're, you know, deep in the trenches managing these things. And I believe that we're going to be as stable going forward. And if not, then, you know, we won't be going forward.
And, and I thank you for that perspective, sir. Thank you for sharing. I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but.
Jonathan, Jonathan Ward.
Thank you so much. Um, grateful for that perspective offered there for sure. The interesting, again, relation. The interesting, again, relationship between a public school board, elected school board, and a board of a charter school is that we work collaboratively. But it is not the role of the school board to recruit for your school. It, it is not the role of the school board to try to help you be financially solvent. And I, I understand that, that the challenges with transportation, I know that's something we've talked about before, the challenges with food service and, and those kinds of things. When we're talking 34 students, it, it becomes really challenging and difficult to continue to have these conversations on our side. Because as we'll hear from other charter school partners that are here today, and, and I'm actually grateful that you're able to be in the room and, and hear from some of this, of the success stories that we have within the public schools. And 20 years is, is great that you all have been there for 20 years. But looking over the past three to four years, the solvency is really in question at this point. And I, I just think we'll continue to ask those questions until we see a change.
Yeah, and I understand the opposition. And I'm not asking you to actually physically recruit or give us students. But advice and guidance will be very gratefully accepted. You know, so it's not just a one-way street. I was telling you things that we could get some help and support from you guys as well. Wherever it's possible to do that will be wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I will just share that, you know, this board is, is committed to seeing and, and, and wants to see any of our charter school partners succeed. And a 20-year legacy is something to be proud of and is, is commendable. Right now, when it comes to advertising and so on, you're kind of in that niche market of, of micro school at, at this point. So I don't know if using that term will, will help you. There's certainly a movement in that direction, you know, across the nation. There are parents that are craving, you know, that very small, very supportive environment. So it is certainly my hope. And that as a, as a school board, I'm confident through Mr. Ayers and, and the academic team, you know, that we're going to continue to provide the encouragement and support that we are legally required to do. And then also just in the spiritual sense, you know, 20 years is a long partnership. Why would we want to see you fail? We, we don't. We want to see you continue to claw your way up and, and get there. So thank you very much for coming before us today. We're looking forward to the, the news of next time. And I appreciate your presentation always. Is there any other questions from the board? We're good?
I, I would like to just clarify one point and I don't want to belabor. A statement was made just a second ago about our instructional units, our administrative units. I want to say that both Mrs. Beals is actually, as one of our teachers in the classroom, teaching one of this core subject, two of the core subject areas. So she teaches that to the K through five population. So her job as a partial administrative is not, is not usurped by her instructional role. Due to the fact that we know our cost limitations, we know our financials, so it's tied in. We have connected the pieces to make sure that we're trying to do all that we can, reduce our expenses, reduce our costs in light of the fact of the low enrollment, lower enrollment. But also make sure we're maximizing all our staff. I'm in the classrooms as well. So as far as instructional staff, that is something that, that counts in those numbers that we gave you as far as instruction and administration. So we serve multiple hats. And, and the other thing I just want to mention too, is that being up in Marion County and McIntosh, we're right on that border, that cusp. If, as, we invited everybody up to see, I know Dr. James has been up, I know Ms. Campbell's been up. So I mean, I remember coming up and we've seen, you've seen the school, you've seen the facility. It's, it's an awesome facility. It's an awesome school. We're trying to do, you know, more and more each year with that. And it doesn't matter, whether we have 35 students or 55 or 65, we want to provide the best quality academics and social experiences up there. And it doesn't preclude working with our, we know we need to work within the communities, with the communities, and make sure that people up there know that they have an educational representative, an educational school up there as a choice for, for families that want that choice. So I want to thank you for your time and your indulgence and your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your day. Is there any public comment on our first two charter school presentations? That was Marion Charter and now McIntosh. I was going to do them all at the end, but I'm thinking that's a lot of schools.
Thank you, Marion Charter. Just a point of clarification with McIntosh Area School, the VPK program is not part of their charter. So when you see the enrollments, the VPK students aren't included in that. And they do not get FTE on that. So I just wanted to clarify that and I understand that. All right, next up is Ms. Vanessa Baxley with INA A. Colan Academy.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Baxley.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much. I have the great honor of representing INA A. Colan Academy as their principal. And thank you so much for having us. As you know, we are still a new charter school. So we started year two. And I'm excited to share a little bit about where we are at this point. Our vision is to educate the hearts and minds of students and families in an environment where everyone belongs, works together, and thrives. And I need to say a big thank you to all of you and to everyone with Marion County Public Schools who has helped us every step along the way. Mr. Ayers, I, I'm a frequent phone call to his office. And he has been so gracious and kind with my numerous questions. I want to thank our school board, who has just stood alongside of us and helped so much throughout this year, through the beginning and being so supportive, as well as our fellow principals. So I, I am so grateful that I have been met with a great amount of support. I have to also give a shout out to your assessment team. They have been phenomenal and so, so helpful. And I have just appreciated all that they have done to help our school in our year one and year two. Our mission is to cultivate passionate learners in an exclusive school community in which individuality and diversity are valued and students develop understanding and empathy for others through collaboration and active learning. As you can see, year one, we started with 214 students, K through six. Our sixth graders, we had two classes, 44 total students. They really kind of felt like fifth grade 2.0. They were on the lower level. We have, you know, a two-story school. And this year, we doubled in size with 436 students through seventh grade. And the middle schoolers truly feel like middle schoolers as we grew in that area from 44 students to 132 middle schoolers. So the look of our population and the dynamic of our campus is definitely different than our 214 that we had last year. We're pleased to say we had, we run a seven-period schedule and a full middle school program. And as you can see, our projections for next year are to add 110 students for 546 students starting year three. Our motto is sharp minds, kind hearts. And we really want that represented in everything we do, in the classroom and out of the classroom. Our core values are inclusiveness, family involvement, constructivist approach, and social responsibility. Last year, we had, you know, the great pleasure of being an A. school. And so now that bar's been set high to maintain that. And the way that we are doing that and addressing student needs at every level is through our MTSS process, one-to-one device started in first grade, our ESE support facilitation, small group facilitation, curriculum support and interventions, and our after-school tutoring with our teachers as well as our volunteers. So we have a two-day-a-week tutoring program, which is managed by our teachers within their classroom during their hours. And they select the students, whether it be interventions or enrichment, that they meet with on a regular basis. So two times a week, some teachers decide to, to focus specifically on interventions. Some teachers do an enrichment group one day and interventions on another day. And we have seen great success. The teachers, I think, are really invested in helping those students grow and meeting them where they are. And this is giving them some extra support. We also have a wonderful group of volunteers. We've had a lot of consistency with our volunteers, which just really adds to our school population. Our students get to know them. They have great buy-in in our school and they're very invested. So we are very, very fortunate for that. Again, earning an A. last year, we, we are so grateful. Our teachers and our students worked very, very hard in maintaining that. This is a look at where we are this year with PM one and PM two. And we're very pleased with our scores and our results and the growth that we've seen from PM one to PM two. Adding that middle school, we were able to add that advanced math class with pre-algebra. And our students have been performing very, very well. So we're very pleased at those test scores. Our middle school growth, as I mentioned, 44 to 132 students, which has definitely created a new environment. So being a new school in year two, we are still creating our culture. Focused on our mission, focused on our vision, following our charter school SEL and project-based learning. We are creating our culture amongst our staff, our teachers, our students, and our families. As I mentioned, we created that seven-period schedule. And we're continuing the conversation as we grow to eighth grade on what some of the electives and enrichment areas will look like as they grow, getting parent and student input. We are creating developmental opportunities for students in and outside of the classroom. We've grown with our extracurricular programs because we truly believe in developing the whole child and out-of-classroom learning opportunities. We developed this year a career research course and an event where a number of community members came in and spent numerous hours over a week meeting with lots of our middle school students, but as well as our elementary students to talk about careers and skills and developing those skills and finding something that you love. We also have a student ambassador program with our, our highest level of students right now, our seventh graders who will move to eighth grade. And being on a campus that's K through eight, I think that that's one of the most beautiful opportunities is the older, older students are really serving as role models. And so we encourage them to be role models and our younger students definitely look up to them for guidance. We do maintain our after-school program with about 100 students in attendance. And this year, we started serving lunch on campus. Last year, it was through a, a provider bringing in lunch. But this year, we have our own lunch program on campus. So that has definitely been an area of growth. I think I missed one slide that mentions our programs that we added to campus. There we go. This year, year one, we had parent involvement, but we did not have a formal parent organization. This year, it's parents in parliament. And parliament is a group of owls. So I just always like to explain that because some, some people kind of say, what does that mean? Why, why is it called that? Our student life areas that we have increased this year, again, the student ambassadors and our safety patrol. And we added a lot of different after-school activities and opportunities. And those were all teacher-led. So teachers stepped up and said they wanted to coordinate after-school programs that include 4H robotics. We have a show choir and a chorus which perform at various locations in town. And we increased athletics. Last year, we had basketball. And this year, we had flag football and cheerleading. And we look to add a few more sports hopefully as we move forward. Again, as a new school, a newer school, we are continuing to assess the needs of our student population and meet them where they are and shift and pivot as we need to. I have to say, we have an incredible team of staff members and teachers with a can-do attitude. So as we grew this year and our, we, our school environment looked a little bit different, they have all been willing to assess what we need to do to make sure our students are getting everything that they need. We are proud to say that all but one student in our re-enrollment process is returning for next year. And we have selected through our lottery process. And for next year, after our 546 students, we have a waiting list of 645 students. Are there any questions?
Board Member Campbell?
Sure, I, and I am going to send you an email shortly after this to get a tour out there scheduled again. Because I came to, I haven't been there since we've grown to this point. So I'm looking forward to coming out.
Please visit at any time. I will say, giving a campus tour is probably one of my favorite things. I love for you to see our students in action and our open concept learning. They've really embraced that this year, kind of being outside of the classroom. So please, all of you, come visit.
Wonderful. So I absolutely will be doing that in the next couple of months. But I guess I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you for having a show choir. That's a huge passion for me that I really wish more of our schools in the county would actually adopt. But my other actually kind of a question is, since you do have these athletic programs that you're offering with your students, I don't know, and this probably is a question for our team more than even you, but if there's even an opportunity, our public middle schools are doing intramural flag football and intramural basketball as well. I don't personally see a challenge with you being incorporated into that schedule. Perhaps you are playing against the private school basketball programs. But if, I mean, you are a public school. So if you wanted to be incorporated into those schedules, I think that would be something Dr. Livin Good might be able to talk to you about if that was something that you had an interest in.
Well, thank you, absolutely. And that is something that we have discussed. Last year with fifth and sixth graders, it really was not an opportunity. And we did have, we were, we were welcomed into the parochial and private schools. We really felt like having sixth graders, having an out-of-the-classroom experience and opportunity was very, very important. So everybody pitched in and we built the program for our fifth and sixth graders. As we move to eighth grade, we are hoping that we can become a part of the, working with the public schools and competing in those athletic arenas as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. James.
Thank you for sharing and I appreciate you being here. I know, I want to acknowledge that this year has been a lot for you to take on as a leader. And there's been a lot of shifts and you've had to step into this role. And so I called Mr. Ayers when I had heard of a transition in leadership and just wanted to make sure that like you were going to be set up for success because it's taking on a lot. And I just wanted to say thank you for stepping into that role and, and really taking it all on. Because you've really had to, as especially with doubling in size and essentially adding so much, so many more students next year. It's just a significant load for you as a leader to step into. So I, I wanted to recognize that you had to make that shift and that is valuable. So I wanted to make that acknowledgement. You touched a lot on your numbers, but you, you guys clearly have a desire for families to come join you, which is wonderful. And I think that the, the important thing to note is that while there was a perception that potentially your school would be only this, these type of students who are like a private school student or a, a super affluent student, that is not the case. It's a lottery. And so you represent all families as, who can get their child to your school. And so the type of student who is attending your school is not the perfect cookie cutter child. It's a child that comes from a varying backgrounds with varying needs. You have students with ESE needs, you have students with gifted needs on every end of the spectrum. And so as you continue to grow, the hardest thing will be to continue to meet the needs of the ESE students. And I know that's something that's a growing pain for sure that I have heard, is that just continuing to make sure that you have the resources on your side to meet the needs of the students. And as kindergartners come in, if they haven't been identified previously, as educators, we all know, it could take a couple of years to really determine what the needs of that student are. And so as that shift continues to happen, just making sure that we're finding the right educators to support those students' unique learning needs. But I think what you guys are doing out there is great. And I'm grateful that you're providing a resource. To be honest, I don't know where we would put 430 students. So I'm super grateful that you guys are in a place that is meeting a need that we have in. We, we talked, I don't know, the day... We talked, I don't know, the days run together. I think two days ago, we talked about the fact that we're going to open two schools, and they're probably already going to be full, and they're going to serve a community that is close to you. And so I just am grateful that you are there to close the gap and meet the need for families.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Good. I just wanted to share a couple of things. I was really excited to see in your presentation that 4H is offered to all your students. And I have had the pleasure of seeing your show choir. I encouraged that team to reach out to our team, because I would love for them to come and do a song or something for us, because their patriotic program was phenomenal. So thank you for the work and the opportunities that you give to our students. And I also loved on Slide 9, that the conversation and the things that you're doing really align with what we're doing in Marion County Schools, all the opportunities that are available outside of academics for them, for your students. So that's really, really exciting. I always enjoy being on your campus. I will say that your staff is just lovely. It's always welcoming, they're always very welcoming, and there's always things going on. And kids are out and about doing activities, so it's always a pleasure to visit. I did have one question. I don't know if you can answer at this time, but are there talks still of moving forward with a high school, or where do you stand in preparation for that?
Our charter is for a K through eight. So at this point, we will max out at our grade level next year with eighth grade. And I am, I'm not aware of any conversations at this point for a high school charter.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That must be just rumblings within the community. So thank you for clarifying that for me. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad. Board Member Cummings?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. And yes, Principal Backsley, I just wanted to extend my gratitude and appreciation for the vibrant school that is growing. And we really appreciate the partnership. It's very clear in our community that we have plenty of students to go around. And so to have high-performing charters partnered with us in our public schools is just wonderful. So thank you for everything you do. I'll look forward to getting out there soon, too.
Okay, please come visit. And again, thank you all for all of your support and our staff and teachers and parents. It truly is a team working to make this successful, and I'm grateful for all of the support.
Wonderful. Thank you. And is there any public comment on INA: Colon? Okay, hearing none, we shall move on.
Thank you, INA: Colon Academy. Just a point of clarification, too, on INA: Colon Academy's enrollment. They have a unique charter situation where the developer of the Collesta Community built the school. So therefore, by state statute, they're able to reserve 50% of the seats at their school for community members. And so they run a lottery for that. And then it's opened up statewide, virtually, for everybody else. And so I just wanted to answer that question like that.
Just a point of clarification for me. So the lottery is for the neighborhood kids, the Collesta kids, but also for incoming kids?
Correct. And so they run an initial lottery, which is just basically for those that are living in the community. And then the remainder, 50% of the seats, is opened up virtually statewide for the lottery.
Just wanted to confirm.
Okay, we have another question for you, too. And I'm not, I don't know if this is something you can answer, but as listening to the presentations this morning and the success of many of our charter schools, and a previous conversation talking about struggling with enrollment, do our charter schools get together? Do they collaborate in what they're doing to recruit? I just, I think it's...
I encourage that. And I have, and especially with Ms. Backsley, when she first started, you know, getting them with the other charter principals, they do that, but that's independent on their own.
Okay.
So I, you know, encourage it, and I always let them know, but it's independent on their own.
Thank you. I just, I was saddened that McIntosh Area School wasn't able to stay, to hear the successes and maybe learn from and share in what's going on at our other charter schools. So that's where I was thinking. So thank you.
Yes, that crossed my mind, too, actually. And so hopefully, they're listening on the drive back up to McIntosh, because I know they're wearing several hats as well. But I love the idea of a charter school cohort and, you know, being able to share best practices and all that. So there you go. Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, I'd like to introduce Ms. T.C. Matthews. She's the executive director, and she will introduce O'Callaghan Charter Middle and O'Callaghan Charter High.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too, Chairman Throer, Vice Chair Campbell, board members, Mr. Powers, Ms. Martinez, and Dr. Talbert Irving. Nice to see you. Thank you so much for having us here today. Very quickly, Ms. Conrad, as you know, the principals of all of our charter schools wear so many hats that the actual act of getting together is challenging. However, we have plenty of phone calls.
Okay. That's good to know.
So we do have an open line of communication with each other. So just to answer that question.
Thank you for sharing that.
When you're the last to present, very often, people have said a lot of what you were planning to say. But I'd like to reiterate, over the nine years that I've been doing this, I know for sure it takes three really key, critical pieces in order to be a successful charter school, specifically when we're looking at our students. Behavior, first and foremost. We have to ensure that our students are safe, that there is a consistent behavior plan, and that behavior is what it needs to be. Number two is getting great teachers. And Ms. Backsley at INA has done an exceptional job of that. We feel we've done an exceptional job of that. And you also heard the longevity that Axon, Ms. Axon, has at her school. We want the best of the best, which I know you guys want, too. But we do know that getting those great teachers in there really makes a huge difference, specifically when you're looking at a small school environment. And then last but not least, we know that building that culture of our schools is so key, critical. And that includes our parental engagement, our relationships with our parents and families, and how they feel when they come into our schools. So today, I'm going to do it a little different. In the past, I've always presented this information to all of you. But I think it's time to bring our principals up here and let them talk about what they're doing and how they're doing it. Specifically, when we look at the middle school, Mr. Post came to us, I think it's been seven years ago. Is that right? It's been seven years since he joined us. And one of the greatest things that he brought to the table, although he brought many, the one that sticks out in my mind is that very first thing that I shared with you that needed to be there in order to be a successful charter school. He brought a consistent, thorough, and deliberate behavioral program that really turned our school around. And if you guys remember back in the day, it really made a serious flip, and that is to the credit of Elia's Post. So today, I'm going to ask him to just share with you some of the data and trends that we're seeing here at O'Callaghan Charter Middle School. We are not going to read our report to you because you have it. If you have any questions afterwards, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Good morning. Oh, let me...
Morning.
Yeah.
Have to make yours taller.
Yeah, a little bit. Good morning, members of the Marion County Board, Chair Throer, and Deputy Superintendent Talbert Irving, and of course, all guests here today. I'm going to go over generally what our three main goals were this year, what we've done to achieve those goals, and then some data to see what our progress has been. So our first goal for the year was to increase our, all grade levels and all subject areas to increase proficiency by 10% during each FAST progress monitoring in language arts and math. So we wanted to do that from PM1 to PM2, and then, of course, PM2 to PM3, which, of course, we don't have that PM3 data yet, but hopefully, it'll go in the right direction. So our steps to closing the achievement gaps, we are continuing developing things that we changed last year to provide varied methods of instruction. Initially, when I arrived at O'Callaghan Charter, our fundamental math, known as intensive math, was purely a lab where students worked on a math program for 45 minutes to 50 minutes. And what we noticed was that eventually, you know, after 10 minutes, there was a, students were not engaged, and we needed to make a change. So we started this year, actually, last year, we started with a fundamental math program that works on rotations, that does work on iXL, where they're learning the basic math skills, but also gives them hands-on experiences, hands-on projects, things where they can, yes, they learn about the standard and how it looks on paper, but how does it look like in real life? For example, I think it was about six weeks ago, students were working on a food truck, doing pricing, doing averaging, measuring, applicable skills, real-life skills. Another part of fundamental math is a rotation that is almost like a basic tutoring session for those Tier 2 and Tier 3 students. Five years ago, our intensive math program only included Level 1 and Level 2 students. But we noticed that post-COVID, that even with our advanced students, students that are taking algebra and geometry, there are math gaps. They are struggling with basic math concepts. So we actually enroll all of our students in fundamental math, and we basically tier the instruction by group by what they need. And the way that works is our algebra and, our regular math teacher and algebra, geometry teachers, they collaborate with the fundamental math teacher to see what skills need reinforcing. Because we all know that the standards for math, it's an ongoing list, and it's very difficult sometimes for the teachers to go back. Well, he's able to go back and, through collaboration, to say, okay, we need to focus on these basic standards to try to reinforce that, whether it's for the student that's a Level 1 or a Level 4, 5, Algebra 1 honors and geometry student. So hitting it from both ends, okay? Okay, we track our bubble kids. And if, for those that don't know what a bubble kid is, a bubble kid is a child that can almost demonstrate proficiency. It's right on the border of being a High 2 or, let's say, a Low 3. Of course, we don't want any of our students that are at a Level 3 to, you know, drop down to 2. So we track them. We look at their PM1 and PM2 data. We look at what strands they're struggling in, and then try to tailor what instruction they need so that they don't fall into the 2 and perhaps excel further up to a higher 3 or even a 4 or 5. And the same goes, of course, for our Level 2 students, students that have Level 2, because we want them to be proficient. That's one of our main goals, is to raise proficiency. So in order for that to happen, we need those 2s to be bumped up. And the last thing, and I know that, you know, we can, we could spend a lot of money on different programs and different curriculum, but one of the things that we noticed was motivation is probably, I can't put a percentage on it, but it's huge. If we can't motivate our students to want to take the assessments or to want to do the work, then it doesn't matter what program we have. And so we have tried to incentivize everything, from actual grades in, you know, in the classroom, A/B honor roll, A honor roll, to showing growth from PM1 to PM2. And I'll discuss what those incentives look like a little bit later. So what's the progress? Well, if you look at ELA, 6th, 7th, and 8th, from PM1 to PM2, we actually met our goal in all areas, except a 1, I'm 1 percentage short of in 6th grade ELA, but I'm confident that we can make that up during PM3, because we're seeing that growth. And it's great to see that, yes, we've gained more in proficiency, but what this data does not show, which I probably should have included a slide, is that our Level 1s, a majority of Level 1s have moved up to Level 2. So there's growth. And we are, this year, since growth, the state will be looking at growth. I'm hoping that happens for PM3 as well. That would be nice. And yeah, so that's, you know, those are the things that we're focusing on. Our second goal was to decrease the population that have a 10% or more absentee rate. When we looked at the data, those students are not proficient. Those students that are excessively absent are not there for instruction. If you're not there for instruction, it's just common sense, you're not going to produce well. And I would also say that those students are our least motivated students. So a couple of things that we're doing, during parent engagement events, we're really emphasizing the attendance, the importance of instructional time. Aside from that, the beauty of having around 200 students, 190 to 200 students, is that we're small enough that I can have impromptu conferences with those students on the fly. If I see them coming to the front office, I ask, come on, you know, could you have a minute? And we could have those discussions, because a lot of parents are not looking in the sky where to see, to see that their attendance, their child's attendance, has affected their academic grades. And it also allows me to build those relationships. And we're seeing a more positive trend in attendance with regards to those that are excessively absent. We also have Wednesday makeup sessions. Because every Wednesday is an early release day for us, we have used Wednesdays on twofolds. One is, you know, yes, we're going to have students that are absent once or twice, they come in, they want the makeup sessions, right? They don't want their grades to drop, they want to learn the material. But then we also have students that, for one reason or another, are not in school enough. And once we have conferences with the parents, they agree that their children stay after school to attend these makeup sessions. Well, that now has become a deterrent for some of those folks, because they want to go home, and they will not go home. They will stay after school for another two and a half hours to try and learn the standards and complete the work that they are missing from excessive absenteeism. Okay? And of course, we have our child study team meetings, where a representative from the county comes, and we meet with a parent to discuss, you know, what is, what is holding the parent up from getting their child to school. So what's the progress on that? Currently, 15% of our students have exceeded 10% or more absenteeism. That's down 12% from the previous school year, and hopefully, that number does not go up, but that is still an improvement from what it was. Our third goal, which almost relates to attendance as well, because if you're, if we have a behavior issue and students are getting suspended, again, they're going to miss instruction, they're not going to be motivated, they're going to have learning gaps. So one of the things that we do is we consistently reinforce the school-wide expectations, which is SOAR, to be safe, organized, attentive, and respectful in all areas. We do this especially after we come back from break, because middle schoolers have amnesia, and they forget what the basic rules and expectation are. And we have frequent celebrations for students that demonstrate appropriate behavior, again, trying to incentivize as many positive things that are going on on our campus as possible, okay? And what is our progress? 16% of our students have been suspended for one or more days, and that's down from 11% from last year. We're trying to get more creative with consequences that don't necessarily remove the students out of the school, because that's, that hurts, that hurts us, that hurts them. It's a lose-lose. We want to motivate students to want to earn. We are, there's nothing that we give away for free. Our middle schoolers have to earn everything at our school. And, you know, we have something that we call platinum, gold, silver cards for demonstrating proficiency on the FAST or demonstrating growth on the FAST. And, you know, sometimes you don't realize that you have a carrot in your hand until you try it. And it has been a huge hit, because we're a uniform school, which works out very well for many reasons. One of the incentives is that they can wear their regular clothes when they earn a certain card. For example, Straight A honor roll students can use that card on Fridays and wear regular, still appropriate clothing, but they don't have to wear the uniform. Well, that has been a great magnet. That has motivated students to try a little bit harder on their FAST assessment and not just dismiss it as another test. So that is a win. We've grown our honors program. Last year, we only had three students... Last year, we only had three students that qualified for Geometry, because the previous year, they were seventh graders, they took Algebra One. Well, this year, we have 11 students that are in Seventh Grade Algebra Honors, and they will be going on to Geometry. Again, trying to make it prestigious for those students and worthwhile to put in the work. You know, we, we do all sorts of things. One of the things we did during Semester One was I cooked the students that were consistently on A and A/B Honor Roll a pancake breakfast. And it's, it's the little things that you're able to pull off in a small school to create that culture, you know, is post-making breakfast, December, whatever, I mean, it was 17th. And it's something that they look forward to, so. And one thing I want to mention is next year, to even motivate students further, we are going to have multiple clubs offered that will be meeting once a month on Wednesdays. Again, trying to curb attendance, trying to curb discipline, and trying to encourage a stronger academic effort, willingness to work, motivation. That is all.
Thank you, Sarah.
No comments at this time.
Okay. All right, we'll open it up to the board. Yeah, go ahead, Vice Chair Cummings.
I just have a couple of things I want to celebrate with you. You made the statement that your students moved from Level One up to Level Two, and that's really easy to say in one statement, but that's a lot of work by your team. And I just want to know that, want you to know that I'm celebrating with you because that's a challenging task, and it really is quite an accomplishment. So just kudos to you and your team. That is exciting news. The other thing I just wanted to acknowledge is you talked about math gaps, and to much of the community, COVID is over, but for education, it's not. And it's a real challenge that we all face, and it does rear its head particularly in math. And so I'm just excited that you all have identified that and you have specific strategies you're working on, you know, so you can identify students and what they're missing, because it is a real challenge, real challenge. So thank you for your work in that area. And then I did have a question. With your suspensions down 11%, and I know you said you're really focusing on the positive, are there any other changes that you've made that you think have positively impacted that number?
Yes, we started because initially, and we try to not, you know, have teachers write a slew of referrals, we have a step in between. They're actually on orange sheets that, especially if it's minor, minor items, that don't necessarily, you know, warrant a full referral, once maybe counseling and a conversation with myself or my Student Services Manager. So we incorporated that. And really trying to push good decision-making, you know. I had a student that, you know, hurt her ankle, and I had another student volunteer, and then that student actually has the potential to be a, you know, a discipline issue and volunteered to move that student's bookbag around all day. I took, I, that's when you have to take that opportunity to reward the student for the positive choice, for the, you know, you're, you're being a good human being by helping this other student. And it, you have to look for opportunities to reward all children, whether, you know, they're struggling behaviorally or academically, because they have, you know, I, I would say that winning breeds winning. And if students were to get more wins, they're going to motivate, they're going to be motivated to try harder. But if everything is always a knock, then you're going to stay, you know, where we don't want you to stay. So again, we want our students to soar in all those areas, so incentives, incentives and motivation, that's our approach.
Okay. Thank you. My last comment is just that it is interesting that students will do so many things to get out of their uniform, isn't it? It's a great reward to have that to use because it really is a treat when they get to, to be out of uniforms. So what a great. Thank you for the work that you're doing and all that you're providing for our students, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad. Board Member Campbell.
She took the words right out of my mouth on the no uniform thing. It, what a great incentive. I, I just love, I'm going to say your little school, I know that, I continue to, I'm just, I just love your little school. I, I love, I love that you've put all of your students in fundamental math. That is such a smart way to ensure those students who are going into those advanced classes, I mean, within the district, we've also seen, just because you're pushing them onto Algebra doesn't mean that they've gotten all those Seventh Grade math skills. And there are myth, there are gaps that our students through the years have, have had in math, and so you have identified that and are fixing it. And so that is, I'm just grateful for that work that you're doing, continued success that you all have. Are we looking at a significant waitlist for O'Callaghan Charter Middle right now? And I know you had it in your application about you've outgrown your space, you're potentially wanting to do something else, but do you have real concrete plans on what that might look like?
Will you speak to the waitlist?
I can speak to the waitlist. So this year's waitlist was over 170. Currently, I do not know what the waitlist is for Seventh and Eighth, but I know for incoming Sixth, our waitlist is 30 so far. So we're looking good, I'm going to be at capacity. With regards to expanding?
I am not at liberty to share that information with you at this time, however, things are in progress.
Okay, that's, that's actually really great news and exciting news, so.
And for your knowledge, just because I think it's important to note, we went many years where we didn't have a waitlist. We would literally take every application that we got. And it really wasn't until about, what, three years ago, when our waitlist started going, you know, we used to joke that O'Callaghan Charter Middle was the best-kept secret in Marion County. And I think that secret is now out, and I think that's shown and illustrated by the waitlist that we have, so.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for that, and I think that we, as a board, also identified, especially after 2020, that our middle school families were looking for smaller options. We could have had a small middle school option ourselves and could have had a virtual middle school that unfortunately we were unable to do according to the DOE. But I, I understand why there is a waitlist there now, and obviously with Ina A. Colan also, you'll be our two charter middle schools of sorts, options for families, and with these exceeding waitlists for both of you, it just continues to leave in my mind that families are looking for smaller options for middle school, and I think the district can be looking for opportunities in that area as well. So, thank you, Mr. Post, and, and Post, I called you Post, sorry, Mr. Post, and did I pronounce it wrong still?
Post, like Posthoff.
It's Post, right, I'm like, I.
Post-it note.
Okay, but, yes, yes, Mr. Post. I, I knew it, I said it wrong, I saw it. Mr. Post and Ms. Matthews, I just, I love your little school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell, Board Member James.
Thank you. I, I love the way that you lead. I think that it is similar to how I like to lead, which is just, kids are literally capable of anything, you just have to set the expectation. And you have made a place where people want to come work and where students want to come learn. And so I am grateful for that because I think that middle school is the most treacherous place for any, any human, really. It is really hard. And it's hard for our students, it's hard for our educators because the needs of middle schoolers is just so varying. And so when you find someone who loves middle school, they are someone you have to cherish because there is something unique about that individual. And so what you are doing there and catering to those students and their unique needs is very valuable. I was in a meeting on Tuesday talking about this topic, not you specifically, and it was said that charters are supposed to be unique or provide something different than what we provide, that is the premise of the charter. And the question was asked, well, do they provide something unique? And I said, well, I've been a variety of times, and what I can tell you when I walk the campus is yes, they are providing a unique approach to delivering instruction. It looks different, it feels different, it does not feel like a traditional middle school that you would see at Fort King or Liberty, it feels different. And the difference is not bad, it's just different, and it's meeting the need for all of the families that you're serving. So I think that that's very valuable. I know that you're at 187 as of yesterday, and you started the year at 200, but 200 is also really tight for you guys on your campus. And so I know that like closer to 190 is a more appropriate number. But similar to what Dr. Campbell has said, I would support you all finding a space that not only serves your students better, because we've talked about the challenges that come with being in your current location, and, you know, the students having to transition outside of the front of the school to kind of do their circular pattern, and being in the plaza, and when Exceptional Mornings Breakfast was there, that was a whole nother ball of wax, right? And so I would fully support you guys continuing to find a space that would not only allow you to serve more students, because I do believe that you are meeting a need in our community, but also be a place that is going to be most appropriate for the students to potentially then engage in extracurricular activities on-site, and be able to have a flag football program or an intramural basketball program or whatever that could look like. So your students deserve those opportunities the same, and I know that you guys are working on trying to make that happen as you grow. My final point is, what I believe your enrollment numbers demonstrate is that you can be falling short and the wheels can be falling off the bus, and then in a change of leadership and in a change of focus, enrollment can change. And that is a model of success that could be emulated by other charters in Marion County Public Schools. That changing your focus and changing the way you're delivering your instruction or meeting the needs of your families and students can improve your enrollment to a place where you now have more students than you don't, you don't even know what to do with, and you wish you could serve them all. Ms. Matthews and I had a conversation last summer about a family. Like, people are dying to get into the school, and so I want to get to a place where the cup is runneth over with, for you all, and you have more than enough seats, and we have more than enough seats, and we are all serving all of the families because there are more than enough kids to go around. We are growing so fast, and so you're doing a great job meeting that need and demonstrating positive leadership. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Board Member James. Board Member Cummings.
Very good presentation. I, I thank them, I love the things that are going on there. I'm encouraging, it's encouraging to see that they, they have some innovative ways of trying to get people there and to motivate these kids. So great presentation and look forward to seeing what is going to happen after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. And yes, I just want to again express my gratitude. It's been wonderful to watch this school grow and prosper and now flourish. It's commendable and a tribute to leadership and the teachers and the pairs and the staff that work so well together that I have personally witnessed. It's, and you know, just the individualized incentives, you know, kids are different, you know, every kid is different, every adult is different, and giving yourselves the freedom to find those motivators that click with each and every kid is the name of the game in, in my opinion, and it's what works, clearly. And I think, I just had to point out, you know, with PM One with math and the growth to PM Two is just absolutely amazing, and it just goes to show you, you know, that what you're doing is, is working extremely well. So thank you for everything. I did have a quick question about cell phones and how you're managing that in your space.
So, cell phones, we have a, an expectation, a rule that cell phones have to be off and in bookbags. We do have a policy where we have, you know, strike one, strike two, and strike three, depending on how many times you've gotten your phone confiscated. But generally, we don't have a problem with that. We have, once in a while, maybe once a week, a student that had their phone out, so we do confiscate it, first time they get it back, second time parent has to pick it up, third time comes with a consequence. That being said, because we know that cell phones are popular and it is basically a computer in your pocket, we've also incentivized cellphone use as a privilege as part of the cardholders. So that way, if they're working for it during lunch, for instance, they can be on their phones, but no social media, and we do oversee that because we do have monitors walking around the cafeteria. So they don't need to be secretive and have their phone, you know, under the desk taken during lunch, you know, play video games or whatever it is that they, they do. So again, we want to keep things tight but within reason and offer opportunities for students to earn that privilege.
Absolutely, and use the privilege wisely and appropriately. That is another magical thing about the smaller numbers when it comes to supervision. Thank you for sharing that. I've heard from different schools across the district what they're doing to try to wrangle, you know, this issue, because there's no data that I've seen that unrestricted use to a smartphone for any kid is a good idea, you know, when parents can't even control it or other adults. So I appreciate you sharing that, and that certainly could be a best practice for others in your cohort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentation. All right. Is there any public comment on O'Callaghan Charter Middle School? Hearing none, we'll move on to O'Callaghan Charter High School.
Thank you. Isn't he great? And very quickly, before I move to O'Callaghan Charter High, I think what you heard today is a very deliberate approach to educating middle schoolers, and that's what I love. And then thank you for noticing that we try to create a place where people love to come to work, because happy people are going to successfully educate our students. So thank you. So in my career, I've done some really hard things, and I have to tell you that opening a high school is among the hardest. So today, we get to talk a little bit about, and we're going to share with you what we've done with our high school, but before I do that, I'd like to illustrate some people that are on your staff that have made this possible for us. And I would like to give kudos to Melinda Hamm at Transportation. She's amazing, we're your only charter schools that run buses, and she really works hard for us to help us and to ensure that we're doing it well and properly. Julianne and Ben Whitehouse, you've already heard once, the kudos about the assessment team over there, we feel the exact same way, they are wonderful, they include us, they ensure that we look at our data from a perspective of being a very small school, because you have to look at it very differently with 200 kids versus 1,500 kids. Of course, Jaquia Snowden, who is, works with Stephen Ayers, she is fabulous and just keeps our, our grant submissions going, our reimbursements, she works at making sure we have toilet paper when we order our toilet paper and things of that nature, it's a very important thing to have. Linda Stark with Finance and the entire Finance team, we're very blessed to have the opportunity to work with that team, and their leadership over there is wonderful, and Linda Stark specifically steps up in a way that allows us to be the most effective we can possibly be as we plan our future financially. Stuart Barber over at the Warehouse, he's just phenomenal and really is, is part of our team as much as he is part of your team. Gerald Glenn at Food Services, I don't know what we would do without food services, our middle school gets food delivered, our high school has to go and pick it up. And then lastly, and I don't usually give him kudos, but today I feel like I need to, Mr. Stephen Ayers. He is genuinely an illustration of someone who represents your organization at the highest possible level. And I feel truly, and this is my word, blessed to know that I have his support as we journey through making charter schools work. So I'm very grateful to Mr. Ayers. I think all of these people really illustrate a culture that you, as a board, are trying to develop and maintain for your district, and that is part of what I do as well as our administration do for the O'Callaghan team. And so today, Ms. Brown, who is our principal of the O'Callaghan Charter High School, is really going to focus in on that because that is one of our three main things that we look at when we're developing a really successful charter school, creating a positive school culture and including and ensuring that parents, no matter the grade level, are part of that process. Mrs. Brown.
Thank you. Good morning, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Talbert Irving, Board Chair Mrs. Throer, Board Vice Chair Mrs. Conrad, Dr. Campbell, Mrs. James, and Mr. Cummings. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to share with you our exciting new and only Charter High School in Marion County. This time last year, I was privileged to be on the middle school campus and working directly. directly with these team members that you have already heard from today, planning O'Callaghan Charter High School. And as we began that planning and knew that we would be opening this year, there were many, many facets of high school that we were focusing on and working on diligently that brought us to our August 10th opening date for our students, our current O'Callaghan Charter High School students. Each day, as you step onto the O'Callaghan Charter High School campus on West Anthony Road, we're right next door to Fordham, we focus on the ability to SOAR. And for the high school, both schools focus on that particular acronym, but for the high school, it stands for Success, Opportunities, Achievement, and Readiness. And that is what we maintain in all of our focus with our students, as well as all of our decision-making on what we bring to the table as far as our school experience for our Eagles. And so as we began to look at our journey, these were the ideas that we had that were culminating in August last year that have now been brought to the table for our opening of our school this year. First of all, as you're opening a school, you don't have a mission statement or a vision statement, so I'm happy to share that with you in just a few moments. We obviously were laser-focused on our academic path to success. We have four years with these students to get them ready to move to their post-secondary steps, and we take that very seriously. Also for our staff, we wanted to make sure that we were focused on teacher growth and development. Our staff this year are 11 members of our five instructional staff. We are from one end of the continuum to the other, beginning teachers all the way up to teachers with 35 years' experience. So we wanted to make sure that that growth and development process truly addressed the needs of all levels of educators and where they are in their career. We were also focused on our one career in technical education program, our online business incubator, utilizing the nifty software program as our curriculum and working directly with them to ensure that we had that program ready to launch day one. School culture, as Mrs. Matthews has already mentioned, was a laser focus also, because as you open the doors to a brand-new school and a brand-new building with brand-new students, every student is new. Every teacher is new to that experience, and we have the unique opportunity to build that culture from the ground up. So we really focused on what we wanted that foundational culture to be that would still allow growth within those confines year after year after year. Obviously, developing tomorrow's leaders, we look at every single different post-secondary path that our students can take, and we try to provide opportunities to them so that they will know what they want to do when they graduate from high school, and they are prepared and ready to take that next step. And then, of course, community involvement is extremely important at the high school level. We are very, very lucky to have two very active business partners already this year. I'll share more about that in just a few moments. Our demographics at the time of the slide were 75 students. You see that we have ninth and 10th grade in the building this year. We are excited over the next two years to roll in two more ninth-grade classes, which will bring us to our full ninth through 12th grade capacity. You see that there is almost an automatic split between the two grade levels. Our 10th grade is very diverse as to where they came from. Some did come from public schools. A lot came from the homeschool atmosphere, seeking that social interaction of a brick-and-mortar school. We had several from virtual school, and we actually had quite a few that came from out of state. So our 10th grade really reflects our diversity as far as where they were before us. And you see that we have a very natural, diverse student population with our ESC population being right at about 21%, our ELL population being at about 2%, and our gifted population being at the upper end of 2% to 3%. So our mission and vision, that we teamed together with our first school advisory council that met the first time before we even were in the building, we met at the middle school campus in April of last year, and we began to build our mission and vision statement. The mission statement was mainly our stakeholders' ideas, and the vision statement is our three-word theme that the leadership team designs each year. So our mission statement is building relationships and breaking down barriers to ensure all students are successful. And then our three-word theme, and this will change every single year for this year, is every moment matters. And every morning on the morning announcements, the students hear me say that. Sometimes they mock me saying it because I say it every single morning, but we do start their day off reminding them that every single minute of that day matters in their lives and that they matter to us as well. So our academic paths for our inaugural year, we do subscribe to project-based learning as far as our teaching method and our instructional path. You will see that in all of our classes, including our CTE class and all of our elective classes. Project-based learning is a data-driven, research-based method of teaching that the teacher is facilitating learning. There is an immense amount of collaboration within the classroom, normally culminating in some type of step-by-step project. And the biggest piece of project-based learning lends itself to that community involvement. When that particular presentation or analysis or whatever they've done for that culminating project to show that they have mastered that standard is presented or exhibited, because it doesn't always have to be a presentation, we bring in community stakeholders or leadership from O'Callaghan Charter to actually give feedback about, these are the things that are productive with how you are working through this concept, these are the things I would still like to know more about, and what else do you want to learn about this? And that is how we achieve mastery through project-based learning. Lots of communication, lots of collaboration, and lots of in-depth inquiry into things that students don't know about. The teacher is not spoon-feeding them. They are leading that exploration. They are the leader of that journey. And so every single time that we open up a new concept, we open up a new standard, we begin a new adventure in diving deep into that particular standard or concept and learning everything there is to learn about it. You will notice this year, we did offer honors, levels, classes for our ninth and 10th graders and all four of our academics. It is our intention for next year to offer AP. I believe we are targeted for five to six AP courses, including the AP Human Geography course, which is the one that is mostly focused towards your ninth-grade level. So we're going to go ahead and start that rigor as soon as they get to us from the middle school level. It is our intention to pursue dual enrollment. We do have three or four students right now that are on level for dual enrollment, and would definitely benefit from that experience. Right now, we have a variety of almost 20 choices. It depends on what grade level you're at. With ninth grade, HOPE PE obviously is something that we encourage them to go ahead and take, so their choices are a little more limited. Still, they have right at 20 choices. As they move through other years, our high schoolers have right at 32 choices of electives that are available in the building. Obviously, it depends on how many students choose that elective as to which ones actually make classes. And so in our academic path, I want to also speak to several different ideas and also to our data. You will notice in our packet that I've included our reading data, our progress monitoring one to progress monitoring two data is there, and you will also notice that I have broken it down according to level. This is our most substantial data that we have. Being in our building literally about the week before we started school, there was still technology pieces that needed to be put into effect, and some assistance that was needed for us to have substantial DPMAs scores coming in on a regular basis in our other tested areas. So we had to go very grassroots with our type of data with those particular tested areas. And our hope is that we can utilize the DPMAs more effectively next year, whenever we are not just opening a brand-new building and still waiting to get our internet services and all of that moving forward. So you will notice with reading that our lowest 25% learning gains are at 44%. That's where we stand currently. We are hoping to raise that by 5% by PM3. Our learning gains of all students sit at 39%. We are hoping to raise that by 5% by PM3. And our proficiency level is 30%. As the principal, I would like to see us raise that by 10% by PM3. So how are we doing that? As part of our school culture, we have our Journey to Success Plan. It is an all-encompassing plan that includes every one of our state-tested areas with you're familiar with at the high school includes ninth and 10th grade reading, Algebra I, geometry, biology, and US history. And so when you open up our immense spreadsheet that shows our Journey to Success Plan, the biggest part that you will be interested in as a school board is our small group instruction, which is actually going on today while I am here. And so we are able, because we are a smaller school, to utilize our personnel, including some of our leadership team, to pull our students out at least once a week, if not twice a week, in the areas in which they are struggling, and we provide small group instruction in groups of five to seven. And so already, our classrooms average about 18 to 19 students in each classroom, so we're able, and we're very blessed to do this, to be able to pull out to even a smaller level. Those 40-minute sessions are highly interactive, hands-on, and laser-focused on the exact research-driven skills that students need to be able to perform successfully on their test and show mastery of concepts. So we are not in there stating to them, you know, you need to be able to use context clues to define words that you don't understand in reading. We are actually showing them how to use context clues, allowing them to give practical application for them, and supporting that lesson that has already been taught within the English Language Arts and the reading program. In the area of reading, in addition, we also have our intensive reading classes that are utilizing the software program of Reading Plus, as well as small group instruction that goes hand-in-hand with that particular curriculum, if you're familiar with that. That Journey to Success Plan, that's our example through reading. And math, it is the rigorous instruction in our Algebra I-A, I-B, and Geometry classes. We do have a small number that is testing, that will be testing this year for math. A predominant amount of our freshmen coming in are in Algebra I-A. We're excited about that because they get the two years to learn all of algebra and be prepared to pass that end-of-course exam, which will help them towards their graduation requirements. So we focus on all levels of Journey to Success. This plan will culminate the last week of April when we do two class meetings, the first one with ninth grade, the second one with 10th grade. Myself and our school counselor will be reminding them of those robust lessons that they have learned within the small group instruction, because almost every single kid has been in there. And then we are finishing up that time with our Success on the Test prep rally, which has a motivational speaker and some other fun activities for the students right before they begin the state testing. At the high school level, we do state test almost the entire month of May, and if we are not state testing, then we are semester exam testing. And so we really want them to have that moment to know how much we believe in them and how absolutely prepared they are. And we believe that. We believe that our students will start that test knowing what they need to know to pass the test, but more than that, knowing what they need to know to take their next steps the next year in their curriculum-based path through high school. That will eventually prepare them to gain their wings and fly the nest and go ahead to their next level of what they choose to do. We focus highly on teacher growth. Like I said, we kind of have the perfect scenario. We either have beginning teachers, are very veteran teachers, so the mentoring program is strong between our teachers. Because we are such a small staff, the relationship building came very naturally, and students very much collaborate to share ideas and also share students whenever we begin talking about our at-risk students and what needs to be done. It is an all-hands-on-deck approach to that. We do utilize our Early Release Wednesdays. Two of those Wednesdays a month are used for teacher professional development and data digs. And so if you pulled our professional development plan that we have implemented all year, we go into the year with a very descriptive plan of what each Wednesday will be used for, whether it's student-centered or teacher-centered. And if you look at the teacher-centered, you will see that in our pre-planning, we did the training for project-based learning, as well as classroom management, as well as what our school culture would be, et cetera, and so on. At that point in time, honestly, we didn't have a lot of data to pull for our students, except if they were in the public schools or O'Callaghan Charter Middle School. So we pulled what we could, and we initiated our first data dig, and that data dig was really teaching our new teachers how to find that data and how to utilize that data for lesson planning. We have continued through the year with that type of professional development. Every Wednesday that we just have professional development, I survey the teachers. I ask them, what do you need from us? What's going to help you feel like you're prepared to continue for the next couple of weeks through the classroom? What are issues that we need to address, and what can we do to have you grow? And that's how we plan our particular PD sessions. Our data digs dive deep into, we led and guided our teachers through deciding the lowest 25% for the tested areas and their lowest 25% in their classroom as well. We identified what Mr. Post has already related to as our bubble students, so that they would know those students that are right on the cusp of proficiency and where they needed particular help. Because we have such a small school, we are very blessed to be able to pull that data and actually pare it all the way down to where a teacher can look at a singular student and literally see, on this standard, on this concept, on this question, they did not perform well, and neither did this student, and neither did this student. And that is how we built our small group instruction as well. So those data digs take place each month. During those data digs, we also talk about our at-risk students. I can tell you right now, our freshman class, and please understand this is without testing because we have freshmen and sophomores, we sit at about a 97% grad rate with freshmen. Our job is to keep that and increase that. And then for our sophomores that came in, we sit at about an 84%. And so we already have a very large document that we share out with the teachers that they add to and take away that show, this is where this particular student is, this is everything they have achieved towards graduation, this is their strengths, this is their weaknesses, and the teachers have the opportunity to add their input on that as well. And it's a living, breathing document that we can access at any point in time. So that's also used for our parent conferences as well, which I'll talk about a little closer to time. The biggest thing that we want to make sure of with our teacher growth is that it is relevant to actually growing as a teacher. And so as we designed our beginning teacher program and as we designed what I like to call our growth process, which is how we evaluate our teachers, basically, we have growth conversations, and we're very lucky to be able to do that. At the beginning of the year, the teachers set up their growth goal. I set up a growth goal for them as well, and so we have two goals that we are working on, and we are supporting them to grow in that area. We meet again at the end of each nine weeks to see where we are and where we're going and how we can help and support. As we move to our school culture, which to me is my favorite place to land because it is all about the students. Even last year, as I was on the middle school campus, I began meeting with our students that had been accepted to O'Callaghan Charter High School. And so every single year, parents have at least two face-to-face individualized meetings with me as the principal. And obviously, that's due to our smaller number, we're able to do that. And so the very first one is they come in, they get to sit with their child while they choose their courses, and we get to talk about exactly what they want from their year and the student and the parent and myself, we goal-set for that year. The second one, which is taking place right now, and they do overlap, is our graduation track meetings. So every parent has the opportunity to come in, sit and visit with me. We go through exactly what their student has accomplished, exactly what their student still needs, how we are supporting their student at school, how can we support you as a parent at home, and how are you supporting your student at home so that on May 24, 25, 26, whatever day of 2026, we have our first graduating class and 100% of those students will walk. And that is our goal, and we will not see any other goal but that. We want 100% graduation rate coming out of O'Callaghan Charter High School. There is nothing below that. We don't even talk about it. So that is where we are with part of our school culture. That actually came from those first parent meetings, a parent saying, I really want to be able to meet face-to-face with you. I don't want to meet with an assistant principal or a school counselor. I want your ear. And so I heard that many, many times from the parents, and that has become a huge part of my daily schedule, is just meeting and listening and talking with parents. That bleeds down to the students and our expectations. So it is an expectation across O'Callaghan Charter schools that parent involvement is at a very high level, and we'll talk more about that in a few moments. But our expectation is also that our students are involved. And so as we look at the situation of student voice, those that know me as a principal know that this is my passion. Student voice and building and creating a high school atmosphere is 100% my passion, whether it be in the realm of school safety and what students need to feel safe, whether it be in the realm of academics and what they are needing more of out of our instruction in our classrooms, or whether it be in our social realm, which obviously is a huge part of high school. Currently, we are offering girls' basketball as our one and only sport. Next year, we are hoping to bring girls' and boys' basketball, girls' and boys' volleyball, track and field, and cross-country. The unique situation, and thank you to Mr. Donnie Tucker for helping me through this from Marion County Public Schools, the unique situation that from Marion County Public Schools, the unique situation that we are in is if we don't offer the particular athletic program, the students are allowed by the state to go back to their zone school and play athletics for them. So currently, we have five football players that will be playing for Marion County Public Schools that are sitting in our classrooms, making sure that they have the GPA and their wherewithal to take the field in August. So we're very, very excited about that. It is, however, our goal for our existing athletic programs to be able to go ahead and join the FHSAA at the end of year three and be able to be a part of that particular organization and compete. We are allowed to compete against public schools at this point in time. Our girls' basketball team, again, student voice, felt like that they were not at the level that they were ready to go on the basketball court with some of our larger school teams and programs. And so we did play predominantly private schools this year. The students had a blast. I think their favorite part of it was actually the gear that they got, because they got to design the jerseys and all of that kind of stuff. We offer clubs one Wednesday a month. Our other two Wednesdays each month are student-centered. One is totally towards tutoring. Students can stay after school, and there's tutoring available. We also have tutoring available at any point in time the student requests it, but that is an organized time to which we actually will rotate them through subjects if they need to. The other Wednesday is our club day. We currently have esports, athletic club, cooking, chess, digital art, art, and American Sign Language. So those are our clubs. Each year, our clubs are designed by our students. And they do a student survey, telling what clubs they want. They are the ones that have to hit up our teachers to make sure that our teachers will sponsor that club and make sure that they have the level of involvement that we need. We actually have a student from the College of Central Florida that is volunteering her time to come in and teach our art club. And then we have our director of marketing from Clear Choice Academies teaching our digital art club. So we're able to tap into those resources as well. This is also our first year for our Student Government Association. We were very pleased to be invited to the district meeting of student government that was held at Forest High School earlier this year, and our students got their first taste of student government. We currently have five sophomores and one lone freshman that auditioned, or I'm sorry, applied for student government. Mrs. Matthews sat on the board that decided who would be our particular representatives. And we also have our student body president and vice president. In addition to that, we have a leadership class that works directly with our Student Government Association, and they produce all of our activities. We had two homecomings this year, because we don't have football. We did a test homecoming to see how the students would do with their dress-up days, and we held a very small dance in our cafeteria. And then we did our more formal homecoming attached to our basketball season in January with a dance at the Silver Springs Community Center. And so SGA plans all that. We've done spring fling in reference to Marion County Food Services. Your Food Services program stepped up and helped us host a family Thanksgiving dinner. We had a hundred and forty-one parents, grandparents, or family members attend that on the last day before the Thanksgiving break. They came and ate lunch with their students, which I know sounds like a very elementary situation, but our students wanted it, and our parents really showed up. And what was so impressive is even though they were able to buy their meal from the food services, many of our parents actually brought homemade dishes to share as well. So that is definitely a tradition that we will keep in mind. The students also plan our community service events. We reached out as clubs to different organizations in December to do one community service project. We are hoping to go to the Marion County Humane Society Saturday, April twenty-seventh, to volunteer our time there, so we do some school-sponsored community service. One of the pieces of culture that the students wanted, obviously, were field trips. So in addition to our academic field trips, we do have end-of-the-year field trips that are fun field trips for the students. And then we are one of the only high schools in the district that will support a school-wide for seniors, European senior trip. And we are encouraging the students to take our senior trip instead of going on their own senior trip somewhere where possibly they will not have a great experience. And we will be leaving with our first class on June eighth of twenty-twenty-six. And we will be traveling to Rome, Paris, and London to visit Europe with some families, members as well with our seniors. So as far as community involvement, our online business incubator program, if you're not familiar with what that is, that is literally allowing our students to learn how to build a business that is web-based. And so they do fun things. That's the class I really enjoy going and sitting in. One of their first projects that they did was to do a market analysis of our students. They had to learn how to do a market analysis. They conducted a market analysis of our students of what would be the perfect backpack. And you would be surprised about how passionate high school students get about their backpacks, very passionate. And so once they did that market analysis, they then had to do a cost analysis as to what they could build it for and how much it would cost. At the end, they went back and re-surveyed the students to find out how much they would pay for their dream backpack. And then they actually built a prototype of that backpack out of paper sacks, straws, pipe cleaners, tape, and glue. And so those prototypes, then, we brought in business partners from the community. They watched the market analysis presentation. They presented the prototype and gave feedback. This is all preparing our students in the intentions that through the NIFTI program, we will start competing in the Shark Tank competition that CEP does here at not only the local, but the state and national level, because we really believe that our students can go that far with it. We currently have two business partners. I explained that I would come back to that. Rob Harrison Realty has just come alongside us in a way that is almost unimaginable as far as community partners. They are at everything that we do. They sponsored a family for Christmas. They helped brand our front office space. Some of you were at our opening. It now looks completely different because Rob Harrison Realty has come in and donated that cost of branding to really give that collegiate post-secondary feel whenever you walk into our main office and walk the hallways of our building. They've even gone as far as to donate neckties and bow ties for our students' uniforms. On Tuesdays, they wear professional dress. The young men are in suit and ties. The young women are in dress pants and our blazers, or a dress skirt and our blazers. And some of our young men needed ties. And so Rob Harrison himself went out and bought ties and brought those to the school and donated them to the students. He speaks regularly at our parent events and offers free services to them, and he is also donating all of our awards for our awards ceremony coming up on May sixteenth. Our other business partner donates in kind, and that is the Event Warehouse. If you're familiar with it, it's down on Silver Springs Boulevard. It's under new directorship, and fortunately, had a relationship with the new director there. And they donated all of our homecoming dance decorations, because honestly, being in our first year, what we charged for tickets, we'd pay for the venue, but other than a couple of balloon bouquets, that was going to be just about it. And they came in and they really embraced our theme and donated that in kind, and will continue to do so. Our parent involvement, we have many, many opportunities for parents. My school counselor, our school counselor delivers a character education parent night every single month. It is good old-fashioned parenting tips on how to get through the high school years, because we all know how fun that can be. And so she delivers that with our parents. Our parents are very welcoming of that advice. We have hosted our test prep night. Obviously, we have a school advisory council that meets five times a year. Parent involvement in any of our activities is highly encouraged, and then, of course, they are invited to go on the European trip with their seniors. And then I've already kind of mentioned our giving back to the community through community service. So our three most important factors, and this is in conclusion of the pragmatic piece of high school, and I'm going to share with you the culture piece that you cannot measure. Obviously, we're focused on academics, student life, and community, and we, every decision that we make, we go back to SOAR, and does it fit in one of these three categories? Is it what is best for students? If the answer is even, I'm not sure, we go back to the drawing board and we redraw the design until it is what is best for students. If the answer is no, it's really not what's best for students, it leaves, it's thrown out, we come back to the drawing board, we begin again. So these are the three areas that we focus on in every single level of decision-making out of O'Callaghan Charter High School. In conclusion, because opening a brand-new high school, it's difficult to be able to put your thumb on exactly what our immediate niche is, other than the small classroom. I just want to share with you an experience that I got to have, and I've already shared this with Ms. Matthews. In that readiness piece, the R of SOAR, we've had military recruiters come on campus. We've had business owners come on and talk about internships and apprenticeships. We have, in our future, taking our students to some of the trade and technical schools to make sure that they know what's available through that. And last week, we were able to, at the graciousness of the College of Central Florida, we were able to go to CF. And I took a group of students to CF, and there's one particular student, his backstory is touching, to say the least. And I already knew, because his parents shared with me during the registration meeting, that for him to graduate from high school, he would be the first one in his family. And so this young man is very, very quiet. He's one of those leaders that you just, you can feel the leadership, but he's not outward with it. He is naturally followed by other students. He was very quiet during that tour, and they did an outstanding tour for our students on the campus. We got to eat lunch. Kids were all excited about that. They got to see all sorts of the departments. And as we were leaving, I asked him, what did you think about the tour? And he just bubbled over and said, you know, Mrs. Brown, I knew that O'Callaghan Charter High School was what I needed, because I needed a smaller school, which is what we are. We are a smaller school that allows another opportunity for Marion County students. That's how we view ourselves. We're another resource, we're another opportunity that allows that small niche for our students. And he said, I knew that through the work with your teachers and with you, I'm going to graduate from high school, and I never knew that before. And he said, now today, I know I'm going to get my degree. And he looked straight at me, and he said, O'Callaghan Charter High School helped me realize that my dreams can come true. That's what O'Callaghan Charter High School is about. When you step on our campus, that's what we aim for every single day, through data, through instruction, through student life, through community involvement and parent involvement. We really just want to make our kids' dreams come true. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No comments. Okay. We'll start with comments and from the board.
I'll go briefly.
Yep.
I just have a few quick questions. Understanding that one of your feeders is O'Callaghan Charter Middle, and you guys are currently kind of in different parts of Marion County. I know that there's probably work in the backend to try and work on that. But from a transportation perspective, is that a barrier for some of your families who are trying to income from eighth grade from O'Callaghan Charter Middle to O'Callaghan Charter High? Is that a barrier that you see?
We don't, Dr. James. Actually, the majority of our students do come from, at the middle school, Silver Springs Shores. And so we're very aware that we want them to be able to articulate into the high school. So we are committed to run a bus route through the Shores area to bring them over to the high school, so that transportation would not be a barrier and that they could continue with the small school environment.
Okay, wonderful. With looking at your enrollment, what does, what does it look like for next year? How many, I don't think I heard a number.
We currently have seventy-one active applications, and that is in addition to the seventy-five to seventy-six students that we already have on campus. Our target is on the low end, a hundred and ten, on the high end, a hundred and fifty for next year. Our final capacity for year four will be between two hundred and two-twenty for the building that we are currently in.
Okay, wonderful. And do you anticipate that all of those applications, as long as they're meeting your criteria, are going to be accepted? Or do you guys think that you will operate with like a waitlist and only take some of those students?
I feel like at this point in time, with the caliber of students that I'm seeing come through the applications, that we are able to accommodate each of those students. I do believe that by the beginning of year three, we will probably have to move to a waitlist.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. When you mentioned graduation rate, obviously acknowledging that you only have freshmen and sophomores right now, can you talk a little bit about how you got to that eighty-four percent number?
So whenever you do a graduation rate tracking sheet, and thank you, Mr. Ben Whitehouse, for teaching me this, you will have every ounce of their information that goes into their grad requirements. So whenever I look at that spreadsheet, I look at who is on track for right now. Our freshmen at the end of this year should have earned six credits, possibly more if they did high school credit at the middle school. They should be running at a two-point-oh or above GPA. It's our goal to have them all industry certified. That's not a grad rate, but that is something that we, we really aim for, because we want our students to have that experience and be prepped for the business world whenever they go out. And they should not be credit deficient. So whenever I look at ninth grade, that's what I'm looking at. And where we kind of see that influx is with that credit deficient piece at the tenth grade level. So tenth grade is a little different. I keep hitting this. Tenth grade is a little different, because then, at the end of the year, you're going to add, did they pass the tenth-grade reading? By then, most of them, in fact, all of them, should have passed the algebra. And so every single year on that grad track sheet, you're adding more components to it until you finally get to their senior year, which is your GPA, your amount of credits, if they're credit deficient, have they passed the state test? Did they take personal financial literacy for our freshmen this year? Have they taken PE? Have they done their online course? There's a whole list of credits. So we track everything on that sheet, and I learn, you know, from the best of the best, you start the minute they walk through your door. So that's how, if I'm looking at my ninth graders, that's where we are. It's my goal as a school leader to keep us at that or above that. The minute we fall below that, we're looking at students didn't pass the test. We had a student or two, because we're a smaller number, we had a student or two that went credit deficient, so that we're right on top of that situation.
So.
If I may, real quick, I just want to make sure that you're clear. Our commitment to every student that enters our school is they will graduate.
Yes.
So when you look at the fact that right now, we have about thirteen percent in ninth grade who aren't on track, it is our job and the job of their families to get them on track.
So, so the eighty, I wrote down the number eighty-four percent, which is, I think, the number you said for your sophomore class. So, so that sixteen percent represents, do you have students who have dropped out?
We do not have students that have dropped out. We have mostly students that are credit deficient, and most of those are not coming from your public school system or OCMS. They are coming out of a homeschool or a virtual school situation where they stepped away from their coursework.
So, so they came in.
And some of them are algebra. At the tenth-grade level, some of them, they took algebra at the middle school level, and they did not pass the OC. So even though they got the credit for the class, we are going back and retaking that. And I always go worst-case scenario, even though they're a retake, they're today not on track to graduate until they pass that test.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
So, that's, thank you for pointing out, because I wanted to acknowledge that none of the students have dropped out or left. It's just a matter of graduation requirements and meeting it. When you said students are coming in and they're missing credits, so do you have students entering into your school outside of August?
We do have students entering into our school outside of August. We don't just start with everybody in the house and then not accept other students coming in. I will be honest, we've had an influx within the first semester of this year of out-of-state students coming in.
Okay.
And so whenever we start comparing credits to credits, we begin to put that in, and some of those students were at risk arriving to us. I explained to Ms. Matthews the other day, whenever I had finished up, because I run that data all the time, I used to not, but I run it all the time now because it's a small group. Our freshmen are who we start fresh with, literally, we start fresh with. They come to us with only fabulous things. They've taken, excuse me, high school credits already. They, they can't be credit deficient for us yet, at all. Our sophomores, having just brought them into the building this year and accepting students, we did accept students that were at risk either with testing or credit deficiency, because we know that we can get them there.
Yes.
And that we have, you know, the resources to be able to do that. So that's why you see that. Being able to start with each freshman class hereafter, fresh, except for those that come in, you know, after the beginning of the year, will be very, very productive for that one hundred percent grad rate.
Okay, and honestly, as you enter into your third year, so at that third-year mark, you may wind up getting to the place where you're not accepting mid-year placements, which should stabilize your graduation rate a little bit and the type of student and their level of preparation that you're taking in. Graduation rate is something that we are focusing on a lot in Marion County on our side of the house, and I just wanted to kind of understand, better understand the picture you painted there, because without having eleventh graders, it's, it's really a projection more than anything. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, and that eighty-four percent, when we look at graduation rate in a public high school, especially for eleventh and twelfth graders, the number, the number sometimes when we get our projection is like the best-case scenario, right? And so I just, I think what you're saying today is that your number is the worst-case scenario as of right now. And so I think it's important to at least acknowledge that that eighty-four percent, which is. And so I think it's important to at least acknowledge that that 84%, which is still a strong number, is your current worst-case scenario. And so there's value in just clarifying that, so.
Now, that 84%, just to kind of put it in perspective, your 10th graders, we have no reading test data yet.
Yeah.
So we don't have that as one of their components yet. For some of them, we don't have Algebra I, EOC data. For some, we do, but they are in the retakes. And then, of course, we are working with those through summer school. It is our goal that by the end of summer school, as far as credits...
Yeah.
We will have every student on track as far as credits.
Wonderful.
It is my goal as the school leader, just from having done this for so long, that as we enter into the senior year, GPA and credit should really be a non-issue. We're really focused on getting the tests passed that need to be passed.
Yes. Okay, thank you for, thank you for expanding on that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Board Member James. Any other comments from the board? We'll ask Board Member Cummings.
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the board?
Sure, just kudos, guys. I mean, this is, we were there for the first day, and all the beautiful blazers and all the things, and yeah, just continued success, because this is the way you, it's hard work, isn't it? And, but you're, you're on the other side of it. Like this is, you're almost through this first full year, and we can see the success and the hard work that you guys are, are putting in, and can't wait to see how those scores look, because I'm sure that they're gonna, you're, you're doing a great job. So, kudos.
Thank you.
Mr. Conrad?
Yes, good morning.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry.
Okay. Good morning, and I just want to say thank you. That was a very thorough presentation. And I feel like, as a board member, I'm walking away with a very good picture of what's going on at your facility. And so thank you for taking the time to outline all those different components of the things that are going on, on campus.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Yes, and thank you for that, because you are a new charter high school, our only charter high school, in your very first year. So we needed that comprehensive overview to really have a good grasp of, of where you're headed, and it looks like it's all in the right direction. I kept hearing a repetitive statement, laser focus, and I just love that. I, I think that's how you get to where you need to go, and, and targeted instruction and, and student voice. We are learning up here as a, as a school board how effective and important and fun it is to actually include students, you know, and, and getting their feedback on, on things. And also, the teacher collaboration and mentoring piece is so important. I, I wish we could figure out a way to add time to our day for teachers to have the opportunity to spend more time with, with other teachers. I learned so much about teaching from a Gen Ed geometry teacher, which is pretty far from what my specialty ended up being, but it, it just goes to show you, you know, right, that there's all kinds of great ways to deliver instruction. So thank you for already hitting it out of the park in your passion, your perseverance, your preparation, and your mission.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I know we've gone long. Would you allow me just a few more words?
Absolutely, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you. The one thing I do want to share with you is this, and I think this is important to note, the principals who work for O'Callaghan have very different jobs than principals who work at a traditional school. And I'm passionate about that. Their job, charge, and my laser focus on them is for them to focus on student experience. I work diligently to protect them from anything else that becomes a time vampire and takes away their time for being focused on the success academically of our students, the mental health and emotion of our students, the behavior and interaction of our students, because ultimately, that's what we're here to do. So do know, these guys are fabulous, and, and I think there, there's a lot to be said for allowing the leader of the school to be focused on just that. So my last thing is, I hope the theme you heard was that we're all about building relationships. And so do know, it is our goal, as I'm sure the goal of all of the other charters, to always be an asset to the work that you all are doing. We're here to be team players and to be partners in this journey to ensure the success of all children of Marion County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews, and you exemplified that with opening with, not just acknowledging, but providing such a warm tribute to the district team that, that supports you guys every day. And that is very meaningful and heartwarming and, and important, because there's a lot of great and very hard work and long hours of dedication that are coming out of this district and...
Yes, ma'am.
...blossoming everywhere.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time to allow our charter schools to come. I mean, this is a statutory requirement that they do a report, but there's so much more to that, and I think that you saw that today. Just to, a couple points of clarification. As Dr. Campbell pointed out, each charter school is a public school that's independent from Marion County Public Schools, and they have an independent board that basically is in charge of them. So, and things like transportation and food service, we have several that contract, which is an independent contract outside of their charter contract with Marion County Public Schools to provide food service or transportation. And so that's an independent from their contract.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers, and, and thank you always for everything that you do and for bringing it home today.
All right.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, go ahead.
I just had one quick question, Mr. Ayers. I think every, I think I've asked this question every time that we've had one of these charter school updates annually. Do we have any new charter school applications that have come across your desk?
Not that have come across my desk, no.
Okay. And, and that actually answers my question in a, in a whole, because I know that there are other districts that have different opportunities and experiences than what we have here in Marion County. And so when that continues to be a question of our peers around the state, they're not in that same scenario. And so that's why, since we're in our annual review, I was just curious to know if you've seen any new applications come your way.
And just so that you know, several years ago, the state statute did require, there used to be a timeframe window when charter schools could do that. Now it's an open-ended, anybody can do that. And I occasionally do get phone calls of inquiry, and of course, the conversation I have always starts financially. You know, what are we doing financially and all that kind of stuff? But no, we have not had any applications.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
All right. Thank you very much.
Is there any public comment on the new O'Callaghan Charter High School? Hearing, oh, public comment?
No.
Oh. I was getting excited. Okay. How about we take a little break? Yes, I think we do need to do that. And so we will adjourn now for about 20 minutes. It is just before noon, so we'll try to be back by 12:20. Thank you.
We are back to our work session at 12:21 PM and we are going to be moving on to the 2024 Summer School Staffing Plan.
Good afternoon, I'd like to introduce our Executive Director of Human Resources, Ms. Morant with our 2024 Summer School Staffing Plan. Thank you.
Ms. Morant. Sorry. Thank you and good morning Deputy Superintendent Dr. Talbot Irving, Chair Thor and School Board Members on behalf of Acceleration Innovation in Elementary Curriculum, High Schools and Secondary Curriculum, and Human Resources, I'm excited to present the 2024 Summer School Staffing Plan. This year's summer school theme is Get in the Game: Summer Learning Adventure. The two informational flyers provide the dates, locations, offerings, and other pertinent information for elementary and secondary respectively. Moving to the third and fourth page of the uploaded document, you will see the proposed Summer School Staffing Plan. The first page of the staffing plan shows instructional units and then non-instructional units are on the following page. The plan includes 671 instructional units on the elementary level, 131 at middle school, 117 at high school, and 83 instructional staff members will be assigned to other programs and sites for a total of 1,002 instructional staff members. For instructional staff, there is a requested allocation of 909 staff members. This includes four additional RNs that will be added to the plan. This will give us a total of 1,911 summer school staff members for Summer School 2024. It is important to note that units may be added or removed based on the student needs, program changes, and/or enrollment changes, and this is notated at the bottom of both pages of the staffing plan. The following grants are funding the positions and purchases for summer school. They are ARP, ESER Supplemental Programming, ESER III, Summer Learning Academies, SSIT, and Title IV Parts A and B. That's all that I have to share, so I will turn it back over to you, Dr. Talbot Irving, for any additional questions or comments.
Just one comment on behalf of Dr. Gullett and to the board, because I know your question is always, we have ESER funding that will go away, and that is something important because we still want to maintain a robust summer school program in the future years to come. So please note that Mrs. Riedel, Dr. Livinggood, and Dr. Varner have been working behind the scenes for the past year to address what we'll do to make sure our programs are still robust for the upcoming year and the years to follow, and we're looking at different funding sources to make sure we're still able to maintain a robust summer school program.
Thank you, Dr. Talbot Irving, and thank you for the presentation. Ms. Morant will open it up to the board. Go ahead, Board Member James.
I have a few questions, but they're not for you, Ms. Morant. They're about the program-specific questions, so they're probably more directed towards like Ms. Riedel or Dr. Talbot. Do you want to wait and address questions for Ms. Morant right now? Or?
Mine are probably for...
Okay, so I can hold off until you guys address her?
No, mine are for Ms. Riedel also.
Oh, okay.
I will have...
I'm feeling the love right now.
No, I'll ask Ms. Morant a question. That's fine, that's fine, it's your...
Okay.
Sure, so, so, once the board approves the Summer School Staffing Plan, so that will be on our later agenda in April...
April 23rd.
Thank you. So, once we approve them, then that's whenever we open up the opportunities for these employees to sign up?
Correct, to apply for the position.
To apply for the positions, okay. In years past, have we had a challenge with having enough employees cover the summer schools that we have had? Is there usually a gap, like, the last two years that we've had robust summer programs?
Not last year, Ms. Riedel is confirming not last year.
Okay, all right, that's good. So, the hope is that we will be able to maintain the instructional units that are here and that students will be engaged and interested, and that employees will be as well. Okay, that was my question.
And as a reminder, we, the MOU that was approved Tuesday, will help address the issue of vacancies for the non-instructional staff, because we will now be able to utilize our MCPS interns as well as our graduates of the FEA Academy at Vanguard High School.
Great, thank you.
Awesome, and I just wanted to say thank you for the robust summer school program and also the commitment to continuing it and having those conversations with instructional staff about what best meets their needs as well in terms of timing and dates. That makes a difference, you know, and for ESY, there's been deeper collaboration, I think, than I've ever seen, and I'm seeing that, you know, get better and better through the years. So I think that that's one of the reasons why we're not having as much trouble, you know, covering a more robust summer program. So, that's a tribute to the ongoing communication, you know, quest that we're under to just keep pulling everything together and everyone together. So, before you ran away. Thank you. All right, Ms. Riedel, you're up.
I wanted to comment on that staffing also, because two years ago, we did struggle a little bit to hire. Last year was the first year that we changed the days and the hours because we had feedback from employees, and because we did that, principals really had a much easier time to hire because it was less days and a shorter timeframe. So, we are keeping that this year as well.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so, I have a few questions.
Yes.
My first question is, when I look at the list of host schools, and then underneath each host school, it indicates the blend, because typically at least two schools blend into one for summer school. I didn't go through and make sure every school was represented, but what I started out looking for was Fordham Early Learning, and then began as I looked, and don't see Fordham Early Learning listed at all. So, my question started from, why is Fordham not hosting summer VPK? It is our early learning institution, and they are not a site for summer VPK at all, yet they have more VPK programs than any other site in Marion County Public Schools. But then secondarily, is then no Fordham student extended the opportunity to participate in summer school, because I don't see their name listed anywhere on this document?
They are listed under Oakallis Springs, Oakcrest, Oakallis Springs, and Fordham.
I missed that part. So, so Fordham K2, K1 students?
The rising, yes, the rising first graders and rising second graders, and then Fordham will host their own kindergarten kickstart, and their VPKers will go to a host site. So, we typically put VPK at one of the host sites. Last year, Oakcrest was the host site, or, I'm sorry, Oakallis Springs was the host site. It was supposed to be Oakcrest this year, but we kicked it back to Oakallis Springs because Oakcrest is having construction on their campus. So, next year, there's a good chance that Fordham will be in the loop, because we try to rotate it with the schools that are grouped together. So, because Fordham isn't a host site, the VPK students would go to a VPK site that is a host site, if that makes sense.
I mean, I guess, I just, I don't agree, but sure, it makes sense. I just think if they're the early learning school, they should be hosting summer school. So, what you're saying makes sense, and next year, when they presumably host summer school, then my expectation as a board member would be that one of the summer VPK offerings are at the center where our pre-K coordinator... at the center where our pre-K coordinator is housed. I just think that that would be very appropriate. So, my other question is, individuals have shared concern previously about access to summer school. So, who gets to go? And this is always something that comes up. So, my request is that can you clarify who gets invited to summer school? Or, if it's not an invitation, how does a parent seek out the opportunity?
Sure. So, it is open to everybody in elementary school, incoming, we do rising first through rising fifth at the elementary level. So, the outgoing fifth graders would have to take an opportunity at one of the middle schools. It's open to everybody, but we start by invitation only. So, that means we look at data and we send out the waves of invitations, and I'm not referring to third grade summer camp, because that's completely different. But we use data to send out those first waves. We send the data to the schools so that they know who to send them to, and they continue to invite students looking at the data. However, at any time, a student can request a permission slip, and they are able to attend. We have it posted on the homepage right now, there's a summer learning opportunity, it's right on the ribbon, so if you click it, the flyers are there, and within that family flyer, it does say to reach out to your child's school to obtain a permission slip. So, it is open to anybody, and if the parent doesn't receive an invite through those waves that are going out, they need to contact the school, but it is open to everybody.
Okay, so, thank you for that clarification. Because I think sometimes the invitation puts off the perception that it's a limited enrollment, and so, anyone can request the opportunity to participate.
Yes.
But we'll prioritize the students who have academic needs.
Correct.
Which makes sense to me. Why is Donellen Middle hosting elementary summer school?
So, Donellen Elementary and Romeo Elementary both have construction on their campuses. So, when we typically plan out our locations, we request from Facilities, from Barb, a list of schools that are not able to host. So, she sends us a comprehensive list, and sometimes the construction impacts the entire campus, and we can't host. Sometimes the construction will impact maybe just the cafeteria, or just one wing. So, we have to look at all of those things as we're planning our locations. And we just wanted to, we didn't want them to have to travel too far to get someplace, and so, Donellen Middle was sort of the proximity-wise, the most reasonable location to host the elementary schools, as far as proximity.
Okay.
Because we were worried that students wouldn't come if it was too far away.
Understood. And for middle school, does this mean that we're offering summer school on every middle school and high school campus? Is that, oh, I guess, sorry, that's Dr. Livinggood, but...
Yes.
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 So, I just, the reason I ask is, for instance, Tuesday night, we talked about North Marion Middle and their roof. So, when you said facilities, it reminded me that we had had that conversation on Tuesday.
Oh.
So, I'm just making sure that there's no limitations on that campus?
So, there is a limitation. They will, their project, and we know things will change, but based on the construction project that Ms. Riedel referred to, they will not be impacted during the summertime for summer school. However, and, North Marion Middle is actually hosting North Marion High School, because North Marion High School will have construction taking place during their summer. So, we are anticipating that campus will be available for two sites.
I'm gonna go back to Tuesday night's agenda real quick, because I feel like...
North Marion Middle also has construction.
No, it does, it's getting a new roof, and if I remember correctly, the expected completion date was September 6th, so there's no way they're getting a new roof.
But it's only on certain buildings, so they must be housing the summer school and the buildings not affected.
Okay, I would just be interested in understanding what that looks like, because...
Sure, I'll follow up with Ms. Dobbins to make sure that, based on the pacing of the construction project, that we are still able to have two sites on that campus for this summertime.
Because the roofing project is for Buildings 1 and 2, which I'm not, I can't tell you which building those are off the top of my head, but the expected completion date is on or before September 6th, for North Marion Middle. So, again, this wasn't even, like, on the top of my mind until Ms. Riedel mentioned facilities, so that was just something I had come up with. I like the fact that we have middle schoolers who could be getting some credits, taking care of this summer, and potentially getting themselves in a better position, especially going to a seven-period day as well. So, they really could get set up to not have any credits dragging at the end of their eighth-grade year. So, is transportation provided for middle school?
Yes, for all grades, yes.
Okay.
Sixth through 12th grade.
Okay. Why does it say in most cases? Is it, what is the limiting factor?
Kindergarten or pre-K.
Okay, so, so, rising kindergartens for kindergarten kickstart, and then pre-K ESE? Or just...
Pre-K, I think.
Yeah, pre-K ESE would get transportation.
Yeah, pre-K also, VPK. So, it's VPK...
So, the VPK.
And the kindergarten kickstart.
Okay, so, pre-K ESE will get transportation, just not summer VPK, and then kindergarten kickstart?
I believe so, but I would have to verify that.
Okay. Oh, it says it, bus transportation not available for students attending VPK or pre-K ESE. So, it's saying pre-K ESE. I just have, if those pre-K ESE kids are using ESE money, I'm just wondering why we're not able to provide transportation. And that doesn't have to be a question you answer right now, but that would be a concern I have, Dr. Talbot, is if they're pre-K ESE kids, we should be, I would imagine, we're using their ESE.
We'll go back, Dr. James, to, I was going to give her a new title, Mrs. Williams Jones, to verify about why it says pre-K ESE, and if they would provide transportation based on funding or not. So, we'll be able to bring the answer back to the group...
Okay.
Once we confer with her.
Okay, thank you, that would be, that would be helpful. All right, I think that concludes my questions. I obviously love how large this summer school offering is. I think that it is great that there is opportunity for advancement in high school summer school. Historically, high school summer school has felt like a credit remediation opportunity, and not an acceleration opportunity. I remember the summer before my freshman year of high school, I went to summer school to do Hope and to do, like, a health class that I had to do, and, so I didn't have to do it in the regular school year, and everybody did it. And we were all getting credit ahead of our freshman year, opposed to dragging it and having to do it at a later time. And so, it's only gonna put our students in a better position to be on track to graduate. So, whatever way we, whatever, if you need help, write in grants, so that we can continue to maintain this expansive of a program after the COVID money is gone, I would love to be a part of it, because we, I want to see this continue to be the depth of a program that we're able to offer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member James, Vice Chair Comrade.
I just, I also want to start out by saying thank you. I'm really excited when I look over what all you are, you all are working to accomplish, and the opportunities you're providing for our students on every level. It really is amazing. So, thank you for the work you're doing. And, Ms. Riedel, before, I'm gonna be, go way in the weeds here, but if I don't say it right now, I'll forget. And so, I just want to, I said it to you privately, but Tuesday night, I was talking a lot about parent behaviors, and what a team effort it is, you know, in educating our children. And when I was at Word Highlands the other day, they were putting up our Code of Civility banners, and I just loved them. I'm sorry that we need them, but I love them, and so, thank you for your work in getting those on our campuses, I really appreciate it. So, thank you. And then I do, yes, I just, I just had happened to see them being put up. And then I do have a couple of questions, and this print is really tiny, so I hope I'm gonna be able to say the right number to you. All right, so, we have 671 teachers for elementary school, summer school, that's, that's close anyway, it's 670 something, I think you said. And then we have 108 that are gonna be in the three, third grade reading camp. And so, when I look at the spreadsheet, it'll, it shows mostly three, four, five, some schools have six teachers in that program. So, in identifying students to go, to come to the third grade reading camp, what are we looking at number-wise, and do they show up? Like, the kids that we need to do reading camp, do they come? And how do we get them there? I'll start, I'll stop there, so you can answer that part.
Sure, so, any student who scores a Level 1 in third grade on the state test is invited. Do they all come? No, they don't all come. We have probably half of them that come, maybe a little bit more. But, schools make every effort to get them to come. They get calls from the school counselor, the principal, the AP, the family engagement liaison. So, we really do everything we can to get them to come, because we need those third graders, because we provide additional opportunities, if they're going to be retained, for them to be promoted for cause through intensive intervention, additional remediation, and more opportunities, different testing, and, so that they can make the cut score to be promoted for cause. So, we need them there for those reasons. So, we make every effort to try to get those students to come, because we need them to come.
Okay, what does a summer school reading class size look like? Like, what are we...
For third grade?
Yes.
Around 12 to 15.
Okay, that's fantastic.
Yeah, and the teachers, the number of teaching units, we based it on last year's summer school enrollment. So...
That's all, I'm just, I'm just being honest here, and you look at these numbers, and it just makes me sad. We have so, because Level 1, if that's what you've got on here, that's a lot of third graders that are Level 1 readers. And that, that's a really big challenge, because we know what data says about not being on grade level for third grade. Okay, I think, I think that answers most of my questions. I just wanted to get, thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to get a better picture of what we're looking at for third grade, and I know last year, we had similar circumstances. What do we have going on? Do we have other things going on to help remedy the situation that we're having to deal with, with so many third graders not ready for fourth grade?
So, we do, I know we talked about this at a recent work session, we have our third grade tutors that we hired to work with the third grade retained students. You know, we have 35 of those spread around the district right now, working specifically with third graders. And schools had to make a very strategic plan. So, we look at data with our schools multiple times throughout the year. So, if you were to sit down with a principal and ask specifically about a group of students, third grade specifically, they can show you their action plan, they can show you their data sheets, they can show you how those students are progressing, and they can show you who on the campus, what people and resources they're using to target these students, and it looks different on every campus.
Okay, my next question.
Some people take their...
Do we see trends in deficiency across the district, or are we really deficient, are students deficient in different areas because of different reasons? And, so, I guess what I'm getting at is, one, what they know when they come into school, so we know that's a huge factor, but also, looking at our curriculum, if there's a common thread, you know, is fluency a common issue? Is phonics the issue? Like, I didn't know if we have an indicator...
Well, we do, and I can, I can give you a specific example of something we did just a couple of weeks ago, as, as we're going around having data meetings with schools, and looking at the last, this was about a month ago, so we have 33, say, days left to testing. How can we really drill down and look at the items that they missed, and look at curriculum pieces, and what can we do specifically? So, for example, looking at the last District Progress Monitoring Assessment, there were two benchmarks specifically in third grade across the district that were low. And when we looked at those specifically, one was fairly simple, it was identifying a poem, which we know that that is kind of low-hanging fruit, right? If we could just get third graders to know their poems and identify what type of poem had hit that a couple more times, that might be another question they get right. So, we look to identify some items like that on the last assessment, and we gave those items to the curriculum team, so that they could pull resources for, it was two benchmarks specifically, that we really want third grade teachers to hit again. And we push those out to principals and to teachers. So, we're doing things like that all the time. If we see a trend across the district, or even a trend at a school, or with one particular teacher, we have plans to target that specifically. So, that's something that we do constantly.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Comrade, and I did want to piggyback on that a little bit, as far as the summer reading camp, and just overall, you know, this, we're talking on the specific topic of summer school, but just overall, we know we have an attendance problem, right?
Yes.
And I'm reflecting back on Mr. Post's presentation this morning, and how they have been so successful at finding different incentives, not bribes, there's a difference, motivators, you know? What is it that's gonna motivate the parents? What is it that could motivate the kids? So that we are in the fortunate position of having to say, wow, we have almost more kids than we expected to have, and then we can almost accommodate, you know? Because we have staff now that's willing to come, because we made that connection. Now, how can we make that connection with the families? So, the ones we know that need it the most, which usually can be the most difficult to teach, and they're gonna be back in the summer? But that's really, truly what we need. So, that's what's spinning through my mind here, you know? We're offering free breakfast and lunch, we're offering transportation in most cases, which does include the summer reading camp, for sure, right? Yeah, to the host schools. And then there's some parents like, okay, well, it's not my usual school, but, so now there's that anxiety of sending them to a school they don't know, you know, or a principal they don't know, you know, what can we do to try to help prep? Prep them, motivate them, incentivize them, like, this is really important, and we're putting a lot of our energy and focus into this, and money. So, you don't have to answer that question, it's really just what's going through my mind. Let's, let's just make it valuable. Well attended, yes.
Sure, thank you, Chair. So, I have two questions. So, one, and both are a little bit more philosophical, because I think the answer to both of them is going to be no, but I'm gonna ask them anyway. Kind of piggybacking, again, we're doing this chain of piggybacking, but what families right now are looking for are their summer options, because they're used to having their child in school, and then we've got three months off, essentially, two and a half months, whatever. And so, families are looking for day camps, they're looking for something, and this essentially is like a free option for four hours a day for the entire month of June. Is Marion After-School Program also offering a for-pay program for four hours a day? I think the answer is probably no, but I think that also would be an opportunity that we could have, could maybe in the future, offer for-pay, because parents are paying for day camps all around this community, and Marion After-School Program is a for-pay program, but that also would give those employees an opportunity to have extra hours over the summer, and that would just solve a lot of issues for a lot of families. And I think if a family knew that they could send their child to a summer camp in Marion County Public Schools from 8 to 5, and they just have to handle that, you know, whatever that looks like, they'd have to do the transportation in the afternoon, for sure, to pick the child up, but even if transportation's provided in the morning, like it already is going to be, and then they have to be picked up by 5 o'clock, or whatever that looks like, I don't think we're currently doing that, but I think if we start focusing a bit more on actually how this fits a need for families, more so than what it does for us, because obviously, we know it helps the students get ready and geared up, and they're not losing the summer learning and all the things that happen, but how this is actually a benefit to the families, then it switches the conversation, switches the narrative, and so, instead of going to, you know, XYZ camp, or this vacation Bible school here, or whatever, 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 at least for the month of June, we can help those families from 8 to 5, and they're good. So, that's kind of a question, but an idea. My second thought is kind of a question, but also in that idea vein. We're focusing really heavy on third grade reading camp, because we're identifying those third graders who scored a Level 1. The benefit to progress monitoring right now is we also have STAR that's progress monitoring all of our... that's progress monitoring all of our youngers. So with those younger grades, potentially in the future as we're looking to summer school, my hope is that we have an identified, like, kickstart to third grade. Because we have the kindergarten kickstart, obviously. But the kids who really need it are the ones that are heading into third grade. So we know what they're already deficient in. And we're going to know that because we're progress monitoring them in kindergarten, first and second grade. So if we start thinking of the kickstart to first grade, the kickstart to second grade, and we really don't just have it focused on kindergarten only, but start earlier, I think that that will then potentially lessen our numbers in this third grade reading camp that are the after the fact. We already know those kids are deficient. What can we do on the advanced side, on the strategic side, to say, we don't want them to be there? So that's kind of a question. I don't know if you guys are already doing that, but.
Well, we have our rising third graders. So for our third graders, it's not just the third grade reading camp we have. So we also have teachers who host rising third graders. So we do that as well. We don't brand it that way, you know, third grade kickstart. But we call it rising third grade. But it does offer an opportunity for those kids going into third grade to get some of those skills before they get there. So we do have that, it's just not called that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maybe that is the way potentially in the, not now, y'all, this is good. But in the future, that we start considering those families, they're, they're going to know their child's behind. I mean, they're going to see it. Grade cards are going to prove it. I mean, they're going to know it. So can we call it rising second graders, rising third graders, rising? And then that might even get them even, we, we just got to think of the branding, how we're getting families to really flip that switch to try to get their kids there. So.
Sure.
Yeah, all I got.
I wanted to share something.
I wanted to share something to respond to that, Dr. Campbell, for secondary. Our schools have been real creative this summer because Dr. Talbert Irving challenged everyone to be real innovative this summer and, and offer more than our credit recovery options, like we've all stated. And so as you can see, we have a lot more options in secondary this summer. But what we're able to do is be real creative with our flexible scheduling. So even if a student needs to be on campus to recover credits, we can also, because we have a longer day, the student can schedule, be scheduled in the morning for the Edgenuity Lab. And then in the afternoon, they might take part in one of the other options that we're coding under the enrichment umbrella. So we're really hoping to see a greater turnout because the students will have that enrichment and remediation opportunity this summer. So I wanted to share that and highlight for our families to hear as well.
That reminded me of our.
There we go.
That reminded me of something. So we also tasked every principal, we know that they're doing the rising first and the rising second, all the way through rising fifth. But we tasked every principal to come up with one additional innovative program on their campus. We gave them flexibility to decide what that program would look like based on their school's data and need, and based on some teacher who maybe had a specific passion or skill set. So for example, it could be writing bootcamp for incoming fourth graders. It could be a STEM camp or science robotics or something for incoming fifth graders. We have Silver River doing three STEM camps on three different campuses with other kids feeding in. So it actually is going to impact eight campuses, what Silver River is doing. They're pushing out to the host, some of these host sites to do a specific camp. So each school is going to have something a little bit unique. And we're excited to report back to you all at the end of the summer as to what those programs were and what the impact of those programs were as well. But they're coming up with some really creative things right now.
Yes, that's, that's really cool. And, and will all of these opportunities be sent out from the schools, like, you know, via text to parents and, you know, all of those avenues of, modes of communication? So that.
The schools will target a specific grade level and a specific group of kids based on need. And they will send the invites to.
Right.
To the kids for that one specific program.
Right, right. And that's a lot for the schools to be doing. But it's, target marketing is really what we're talking about here, I think. And do you think that there is potential for the possibility of, you know, talking about prioritizing who needs it the most? For example, the third grade summer reading camp kids, then probably not for this year, to be able to say, hey, parent, you know, if you send your child with transportation provided in the mornings, then they'll have their camp. And then in the afternoons, there's going to be map available. Then that way, they've got their workday covered. Because I think we may be on to something here that some parents don't send their kids because they need an all-day option. So I, I just think it's really great to have these conversations. That's what I love about work sessions. You know, they, sometimes they turn into some really great brainstorming. And, and you guys have so many excellent and innovative things already. And we'll just build on it. So that's pretty cool. I guess I'm still waiting to know if you think there's merit to that.
Absolutely. I think there's merit to that, yes. So incentivizing really, I mean, is what I'm hearing from you all. If we're not getting the participation in third grade summer camp, what else can we do to entice parents to sign their students up? So absolutely.
So necessary for them to come. So thank you, Mr. Post, for stimulating even more creative, yes, conversation.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
All right. Good deal. Any public comment? All right, we're running out of public. All right. Hearing none. Well, we'll go on to what I believe is our final agenda item for today, Dr. Talbert Irving.
Yes, it is. And we'll have Ms. Riedel introduce Ms. Brower in regards to the 2023-2024 Recommended Instructional Materials for Adoption for 16 specified courses.
All right. So today we're bringing forth the recommended titles for the K-12 science material and, or instructional materials adoption. I have Ms. Kelly Brower with me, and she's going to share some information on the process and also the superintendent's recommendations. I just want to give her a shout out and thank her because it is a very rigorous process. But Kelly makes it look seamless throughout every step of the way. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Brower. You get the privilege of bringing us home.
Yeah, I'm the finale.
That's right.
That's how I'm thinking of it. All right. So good afternoon, Chair Thrower, Vice Chair Conrad, School Board Members, and Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Talbert Irving. And it's unusual to see me twice in one year for adoptions, but that is exciting because it means we have wrapped up our K-12 social studies. We're going to wrap up our accelerated math. And we're wrapping up our K-12 science. So we'll be, in the 25, 24, 25 school year, we will have lots of brand new curriculum to meet the needs of all of our students and teachers. All right. So it always begins with a call for publisher submissions. So this adoption was open January 8th for the publishers. We do use EdCredible as our evaluation platform that notifies all publishers of Marion County's intent to adopt and exactly what courses we are adopting for. We had an excellent response to our calls, so that's always exciting. Then we open up our district evaluation committees. That was open January 24th through February 21st. That's where curriculum, ESE, ESOL, technology, they look at all the things, making sure that the textbooks are going to meet the needs of all of our students and all of our teachers. This year, of course, we had elementary and secondary involved because this is a K-12 adoption. We also make sure that compliance of all of the proposals from the publishers are adequate and meeting all state and federal statute. And then we move publishers forward for our adoption committees. So for science, K-5, the publishers that were moved forward were Discovery Education, that is science tech book, I did not make a typo. That is the, the name of their book. And then McGraw-Hill Florida Science Grades K through 5. For middle school grades, grades 6 through 8, Discovery Education Science Textbook, Tech Book, McGraw-Hill, and Savis Learning Company. Of course, we are in ELP districts, so I just do like to point that out. Sixth grade is Earth Space, seventh grade is Life, and eighth grade is Physical. So we do not look at an integrated curriculum in 6 through 8. The publishers in 912, there's a lot of them because we're doing quite a few courses in high school. So for biology, we move forward McGraw, National Geographic, and Savis for both regular and honors. Then for chemistry, McGraw, National Geographic, and Savis. So all of our reviewers reviewed all three publishers. For physical science, we move forward McGraw-Hill. For environmental science, we have McGraw-Hill, National Geographic, and Savis. For anatomy and physiology, we move forward Savis Learning for anatomy. And then in physics, we move forward McGraw-Hill and Savis. You see, the offering is quite large. Marine science, we move forward McGraw-Hill and National Geographic. So our review committee is always up to 15 members. It is made up of community members, which are appointed by you all, by the school board members. Our parent members, I always post a district application on the homepage of MarionSchools.net to entice any parents to become involved in this process. And then, of course, our teacher members. We had an enormous amount of applications, which allows us to have the greatest diversity in our committee for not only east, south, northwest, but also with all of the certifications, right? We look for those gifted certifications, ESE, reading, ESOL, and then very specialized certifications when we get into high school. So the timeline, a lot of this has passed. But we did have viewing opportunities for the instructional materials for the reviewers. We do bring in all the print. They do review mostly digital through EdCredible. But it is always nice for them to come in and see the textbooks and really get to know them. So that was open from February 21st through March 31st. March 28th was community review and school administrator. We collect recommendations and comments that are left with us. And we bring that to the committee at Westport when they're discussing and getting ready to vote. On April 1st, we were at Westport High School where the committees meet in person. There was robust discussion, especially in 912. And we bring back all that community feedback and any other feedback because I'm very open to anybody calling me at any time and providing any insight that they would like, whether it's a teacher who's not on the committee or anybody in the community. Because any feedback is good feedback in my mind. So the committee recommendation process, of course, starts with the review of the materials and feedback by committee members. They work individually, they work as a group. We try to make sure we involve all stakeholders. Then once they get together and vote, those recommendations are then provided to our superintendent, Dr. Bellitt. And then what I bring to the board today in workshop and in future votes will be the recommendation of instructional materials for adoption. So policy 2521 is the policy that allows the superintendent to make these recommendations. So now I'm very happy to bring you superintendent recommendations. You will see that we have both what was selected and an alternate. That is because we do not have state list yet. In 2627, of course, we'll have new legislation, which will give us state lists in July. So we'll have a list prior to starting the adoption. As of right now, we're in the older system. So on one monitor in my office, I keep up the DOE instructional material, waiting for lists. It's like, it's like my Super Bowl day. I mean, it's like the day of all days is when state list comes out. So we do bring both the first choice and the alternate so that we don't have to reopen the adoption. So for K-5, we are recommending McGraw-Hill Florida Science K through 5. Our alternate will be Discovery Education. In, again, ELP, right? We don't use that integrated curriculum in 6 through 8. We are recommending McGraw-Hill with the alternate Discovery Education. In grades 9 through 12 for biology, we are recommending Savis Learning Company with the alternate being McGraw-Hill. In chemistry, we are recommending McGraw-Hill. And by we, I really mean the review committee. Is recommending McGraw-Hill. And for chemistry, National Geographic. For physical science, McGraw-Hill. For environmental science, McGraw-Hill with the alternate being Savis Learning Company. Anatomy and Physiology, Savis Learning Company. For physics, McGraw-Hill and the alternate being Savis. For marine science, McGraw-Hill and the alternate being National Geographic Learning Sendgate. So we all know this is a very long process. So the next steps after today, April 11th, will be May 14th. There'll be a public hearing for the 23-24 Recommended Instructional Materials for Adoption. This is public comment only, no vote. On May 28th, we will have a public hearing for the actual vote. And I'm sorry, May 14th will actually open up, no, I'm sorry. Today actually opens up our 20-day window for public viewing. So those links will go on our website today. May 28th will be the vote. And you will have 16 votes because each subject has to be a single line action item. I do apologize, but that is in statute, so I'm just giving you a heads up now. And then we will open up our formal 30-day objection window. July 9th, we would come back with a hearing officer if need be. Otherwise, hearing none. After 30 days, I will go ahead and order. Of course, we always order from FSBD, our Florida depository. And of course, our goal will be to get these materials into our schools as soon as possible. We, we do have, you know, the luck of K-5 being done. And so as soon as I can start my orders for this year, we will get K-5 barcoded and that out to school. And that will leave us the opportunity to really only be focused on pushing out science when it starts to arrive. So today, or early tomorrow, on MarionSchools.net, on our homepage, under instructional materials, I will post the recommended instructional materials for adoption. This is just a draft. There will be specific login instructions provided for each title so that anyone in our community that would like to look at the materials being recommended may start to do that. And I will turn it over to Dr. Talbert Irving.
Thank you. I just wanted to give Ms. Brower a thank you for all the hard work that she's done with the instructional adoption process. It is a mammoth job to do, and she's done it with grace and integrity. And so we're very appreciative of that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any comments from the board?
I just wanted to echo Dr. Talbert Irving's comments because board, one of the community members that I had chosen for textbook review contacted me over spring break that there was a challenge occurring. And so I sent an email saying, my hope is you're checking email over spring break like I am. And Ms. Brower contacted the community member. I mean, I sent it like 5:30 at night on a Monday of spring break. And she contacted the community member and let me know, you know, by the next morning that they had gotten everything worked out. So thank you for that, working diligently through the process and ensuring that our community members are engaged, our families are engaged, our teachers are engaged in the process. And there really shouldn't be many questions about the process because it's really diligently done. And so kudos to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Any other comments?
I have a quick question. So as these supplies are ordered, and I know you're waiting, waiting on several pieces of that. And a lot of times that has our books coming in at the beginning of the school year. We have, because we have so many, will there be training on these available for teachers during this? Prior to school starting?
We do. We actually already have trainers arranged for, actually, YAMena will have their own in-service day. And I've had my publishers holding trainers for them. And now I know the date is July 18th, so my publishers will be happy to release some trainers. Additionally, for our in-service day, on August 6th and 7th, we will bring the trainers in to teach the teachers the new curriculum. So of course, we don't want them to start the school year without knowing their product. And that's typically when that would happen. So even though science will come in late, as soon as I start to put in purchase orders at FSBD, I will get digital rights. And so we will right away be able to have digital access. And then with YAMena being a year-round school, the priority will be, I will drop ship all of their materials to YAMena. We will go barcode at YAMena. So that they can literally be like, this set's barcoded, push it out. This set's done, push it out. We have all that in mind. And it's always my goal that teachers and students have everything they need by the first day of school. With the fact, with the legislation moving the dates for the 2026-27 adoption cycle. With the fact, with the legislation moving the dates for the 26, 27 adoption cycle, that will make it a little easier for us, of course.
Are there any summer opportunities to learn and get familiar with the new science textbooks?
So we cannot provide training for anything until we come out of board. So technically, we don't end our 30-day objection, and I don't have a board meeting scheduled until July 9th. So technically, I can't even talk to the publishers about bringing in those science trainers. I mean, they can hope that it all works out and be kind and hold, but I always have to be careful that none of the actions that we're doing look like we're in any jeopardy of violating statute. So we're always going to stay very on board. But I know that, from speaking with Ms. Brazington and Dr. Drummond in secondary, I know that in addition to, in addition to the in-service training, they will plan additional training opportunities through teams throughout, you know, the first couple months of school until they get real comfortable with it.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I, just from a teacher perspective, it's really difficult, and I know it can't be helped. I'm not placing blame on anyone, but because of the timeline. But it is really difficult to learn and get familiar with a new program as school is starting. So I just wanted to see if there were any other opportunities where teachers can get their hands on it, even if it is digitally, to look through their units and do their long-range planning for the year. And it looks like this first year is just going to be...
Well, like I said before, as soon as we put in a purchase order to FSBD, I get digital rights. So we can push out the digital, and they can start exploring. The really great thing is we are not pushing forward any new publishers, and so all of our teachers have been in their digital world before. Because once you start to recognize a publisher's platform, you become very familiar with it, and you know how they organize, you know where to find. So that should be a little easier for the teachers, but of course, we're going to do everything we can, but never break statute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Did you have anything, Board Member James?
Not really. Thank you for this. I know that it's a heavy load to lift, and it's, it, you're never going to make everyone happy, and there's going to be people who share sentiments that are not appreciative of the book we chose, and so that's why I love how comprehensive the process is now, because we can lean on the fact that we have included as many stakeholders as, as would like to participate, essentially. And so, and I would just continue to always encourage people who want to have a strong voice in the process to participate when we're going through this adoption, so that they can have their voice heard and represented. Because the goal is to put the best product in front of the students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member James. And Ms. Brower, you know, clearly, the area of textbooks is, is your niche, your area of expertise, and your, your passion, and I just wanted to reiterate my appreciation and also echo, Board, Vice Chair Conrad's, you know, that sense of urgency. I'm glad that the state is finally acknowledging it too, you know, that we don't need to be waiting, you know, two, three, four weeks into the school year to get the books. And so I'm just really glad to see that finally happening. And I also wanted to acknowledge too, just as far as the timeline and the comprehensive work that it takes to get this in front of the school board, to even be adopted as a collaboration between you and Ms. Martinez and others that I'm sure I don't know about. So thank you, you know, to the team for this. It's so foundational for the success of our district.
Thank you.
Right. Anything else for us? All right, we're good. All right, is there any public comment? Hearing none. I think we're at wrap-up time, Dr. Talbert Irving. Anything from your chair you'd like to share?
Sure. On behalf of the superintendent, we want to thank all the presenters today, also Board. It was a pleasure being with you today, and I thank you for what you do for our staff, students, and community. It's very appreciated.
Likewise. Ms. Martinez. All right. Dr. Campbell.
Sure. So, Board, I actually do have just one quick thing that I wanted to bring up, and I'm hoping this is going to be quick. So yesterday, I had the opportunity to ride on one of our buses. So I know that other board members have taken that opportunity in the past, but I chose to ride on a bus yesterday that actually is already in a three-tiered model, and the bus services Osceola Middle School, Forest High School, and Fort King Middle School. So I wanted to see what a three-tiered busing model looked like. So in addition to, Mr. Ostanik and I are going to debrief on, on some questions and thoughts that I had along the way, because that, it was the afternoon route, so when we first said that, it was afternoon. I didn't get up at 6:00 AM and go with them, even though we were up here at 7:00 AM today. But I did not do that yesterday. I just wanted to make an observation, because I know that this board had a lot of conversation over a week, a few weeks ago, regarding school start times and how we're going to the three-tiered model. And the reason we're going to the three-tiered model is because of transportation, in addition to statute changes that are now requiring high schools to start at 8:30, middle schools to start at 8 o'clock, et cetera. And I just want to say that after writing yesterday in that three-tiered model, I personally believe that there is a possibility that Osceola Middle School would not need to move start time. And just allow me to elaborate just a bit. So we already are using the three-tiered model. Their start time currently is at 7:50 AM, and if we just move it to 8 o'clock AM, it would still afford those drivers that are already in place to still get to Forest on time. We, we got there with 20 minutes to spare, and then they would still be able to maintain the Fort King, because Forest is staying at 8:30, and Fort King is staying at 9:00, whatever time they're staying at. I, I do have, if, if this is, you know, a moot point, and the board has no interest in even asking for this consideration, then I can leave it there. But, but I do want to say that it's already a model that is working at this, at the times that those three schools are already operating. So if we were to pursue an opportunity that Osceola Middle School, as the only middle school, would stay at essentially an 8:00 AM start time, then that would take a load off of transportation, because they wouldn't have to change those routes already. Every other single route that is going to have to be done in Marion County Public Schools' transportation is going to have to go to a three-tiered model, and this one is already working. And so those drivers are already doing that, and it won't be as simple as those drivers just picking up 8th Street Elementary, because 8th Street Elementary only has one bus, and Osceola has 12. So I know we've already voted on it, I understand that. There was a lot going on that week, from the time that we were introduced to the school start times and then the vote in that one week. And unfortunately, there were a lot of things impacting District 1 schools, from Yamina going to a year-round school, the possibility of 8th Street and Osceola becoming a joint K-8 school, Lakewood High School going to a seven-period days, lots of things that were floating around, and parents certainly reaching out to me about all of the different things. So I did not have the opportunity at that time to do what I did yesterday. But I did just want to offer, as a board member representing two of the three schools I saw yesterday, that I could see an opportunity for Osceola to actually start at 8:00 AM next year and it not impact transportation, which was, as the team presented, the primary reason that we moved to the three-tiered school start time scenario. So that's, I, those are my comments today. I don't know if there's any interest whatsoever in the board to even open up that potential, but I know, again, as the District 1 representative, I have a file full of Osceola parents that were super concerned about what that was going to look like, and then everybody's attention switched to the 8th Street Osceola conversation. And so then it became, okay, well, instead of that, all right, I guess I can live with this, whereas, again, it was presented to us saying the reason we needed to go to the three-tier, and every school starting at the exact same, every elementary, every middle, and every high at the exact same time, was because of a three-tiered busing model, and we already have it working effectively. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell, and, and I can weigh in on this, because I had the exact same conversation. It was generated not from a parent, but from the transportation team that has been driving this three-tiered route for many years. They're very, very familiar with the kids, and they're very comfortable with each other. It's, it's a section that is, appears to be, you know, a well-oiled machine, so to speak. And when those areas are identified, it is important to take it forward to transportation, to, you know, to make sure that the right ears are hearing it in case there's opportunity there, because isn't it our mission to, to make, help make things better? And, and that's what this is all about. Now, some people may say, "Well, then there might be other situations across the district similar to this that are already doing a, a three-tier type model that they would like to see preserved for, for all these same good reasons." And I don't want to be afraid of that. I would rather have things that are working well brought to our attention to at least be given their due diligence, and then see where that takes us. As, as a board member, I don't feel comfortable at this point saying I'm ready to put it on an agenda. I would like to see it come as a recommendation from Dr. Gullett and, and via the transportation staff, so they have a chance to look at it. For all the reasons you said, and for all the same reasons I believe, it seems almost like a no-brainer. But that's from where I'm sitting, from where you're sitting, and, and actually, I've heard it from someone that's actually sitting in the seat. So I think there's merit to, let's, let's explore it a little more. So maybe if you could bring that back to Dr. Gullett, and she can take it from there and then come back with a, with a recommendation.
Can do.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, great. Dr. James?
Thank you, everybody, for their work today and the four different presentations we had. It shows how comprehensive and varied our work is every single week. I wanted to bring something to everyone's attention. I know Dr. Campbell and I have both touched on it, that I can recall. The warehouse has now been vacant for a couple months, and I have been communicating with David Hurley about what the process is looking like to list that property for sale. And I touched base with him yesterday as to where we are and what is to come, and so I wanted to share that with you all and then make a request. So he shared that at this point, we have three appraisals in various stages. One is completed and the report is received. A second is ordered and the inspection walkthrough has been completed, the report is nearing completion, and the third has a purchase order pending. Per statute, appraisals must be obtained prior to or simultaneously with the receipt of bids. So essentially, we're waiting on this third appraisal to come through, and in three or four weeks is the anticipated completion that he provided to me in an email. So we have to have a meeting of our leasing corporation to move forward in the process of selling the property. So I would request to the board that we have, we make a very conservative date and put it on our calendar for the leasing corporation to meet. Doesn't have to be next week, it could be in six weeks. But I think that acknowledging a date where we expect things to be done, so that we can continue to move forward in this process, is suitable. And while I can understand the complexities of bureaucracy, I think that also setting some deadlines and trying to stick to them, and acknowledging to our private contractors that we're working with for appraisals and such, that we have this deadline, this is the deadline we need this by, the board has a meeting to discuss it. If we have to reschedule the meeting, we have to reschedule the meeting, but I would like to set a deadline and expectation, so that we can have, because the leasing court meeting is only just going to acknowledge whether or not we want to sell the piece of property and start the process. It's not even going to be the culmination. So my request would be that attached to a board meeting sometime, maybe near the end of May, we also have a leasing corporation meeting. So that is my request to the board.
Thank you, Board Member James. Attorney Powers, would you want to weigh in on this? We needed to get your comments today.
Yes, everything she's just said is pretty well accurate to what we need to be doing and how we need to go about it. What I would say is, I'm sorry, I heard an echo, I thought. What I would say is that we need to also have a title search done. I have retained already our Real Estate Outside Council, who does these sorts of transactions, who also has a title company, and is, is an escrow agent and can do everything that we need to, which will save us considerably when it comes time for the process of doing all those events as well. And also works within our, within our board-arranged and approved schedule for pay-for-professionals. So the title search should not take very long. That's a process I just have to get. We've sent over a, sent over a contract for services for them as of today, for them to redline, and then I'll have that ready, since it will be under threshold for the superintendent and the board chair's signature this week or early next. So I would say that I don't know how long the appraisals are going to take. I know it was requested some time ago, and one's done, one is coming soon, one apparently is still in purchase order phases. I couldn't comment on how long those are going to take. The things that I need shouldn't take very long. During that meeting of the leasing corporation, we will need to explore also, or actually during the school board meeting, we'll need to explore some of the options for how we would want to, how we would want to make notice and purchase of the property for sale. So I will also get feedback from our outside counsel on that factor as well. So obviously, transparently, transparency is paramount, is what everybody wants. So I'll keep you posted. I would say setting a date that is within a four-to-six-week timeframe is fine. I need to be able to advertise it, well, it'll be 10 days out, because of, as long as we can get it on with a regular board member, we don't, rather, regular board meeting. We don't need to have the, the rule development timeframe that we have. The question would be whether the board wants to have separate and discreet meetings, or whether it wants to do, as we've done before, where we open with a special meeting of the school board for the business of saying what, what we're going to be asking in leasing corporation, then close that meeting, go into a leasing corporation meeting, then close that meeting and go back into the original meeting.
We can do it all in one meeting like we did recently, then I'm fine with that.
Because that's really fun to put together those scripts, and I've really gotten, you know, good at it.
Yes. We're, we're getting refined on there. I have a question about the real estate attorney. Paying a real estate attorney, is that in lieu of having a, a real estate agent that specializes in commercial properties, market this property, you know, what is that called?
It can be. At minimum, what we need to do is have someone who is going to review and draft our contract for sale, because real estate is a field that is a specialty field. It has quite a bit of things that have even changed in the last year or two. In addition, if there are other services that can add value to that, that we have an attorney who can provide, that's what we would be looking for as well. Title search, escrow, those sorts of things as well. And McGraw-Robert Mutirelli are the firm that we are looking at, that, they've got a good reputation locally, and that firm would be able to do everything that we would need for them to do, including, yes, as you mentioned, doing advertising of it, doing the ability to have, the ability to have our, the fees for commissions, there we go. Let's look, searching for the word there. Have commissions either greatly reduced or eliminated. They may be able to do all of that for us at a cost that saves us, you know, much more than what we are actually paying them. So, you know, of course, whenever I have an outside counsel agreement, they'll always know that I'm, I'm the one who's, who's the skinflint, who is looking at every single, every single dollar that comes in and making sure that it's being spent very wisely, so.
Well, and just personally, I like that idea, because then we have one person that we're going to, to, you know, crack the whip, so to speak. You know, oh, this one's waiting on that one, that one's waiting on this one, and then the time just keeps continuing down the road, and no one's going to be surprised that I'm all about expediency, trying to, you know, get this done. But I also, you know, once we begin to put things out there, then people are going to be like, "Okay, okay, okay." So it would be my preference to not schedule too far, because I don't want to change it. I, I want to be ready, I wanted to schedule it, I want to put the work in to get it advertised and not have to do all that all over again. So that would be my request.
Chair, I have a question for Attorney Powers, but also, I'm looking at May 28th board meeting, so perhaps May- So perhaps May 28th could be the day that, that's a Tuesday at the end of May. I don't know if that'll work, but regardless. My question for Attorney Powers, though, is how does the statute regarding charter school kind of first right of refusal on property, how does that impact us on this particular arrangement?
Well, that property has already been designated surplus.
Okay.
I believe. So if not, that's one of the things we'll do between now and that time. And it would need to be property that's, that is, has no function as, for school use. And that's what we have already, so we've already looked at the policy as it pertains to that, policy and statute. And even within different interpretations of statute, we're fine on that front. So that was one of the first things I wanted to look into, to make sure that we had our ducks in a row. And I know that Ms. Dobbins has been looking into similar things along the way as well. We proactively in advance made sure that we also have our board policy was updated with Florida statute and made sure that we have the, you know, interpretations are clear within board policy regarding that as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so you mentioned May 28th.
Yeah, I'm going to take a look at that, just to make sure that we don't have anything else that is pending with legal for that timeframe that I need to, I don't believe so.
I'm not going to be present for that board meeting, but that just means there'll be four board members here, assuming everyone else is here, which is fine.
Because then the next one would be June 11th, and we are today at April 11th. So May 11th, June 11th, that's eight weeks, not the four to six weeks. But again, you know, these kinds of things grow a lot of legs and create a lot of tentacles, and I am all about getting a date on. But for what I just shared previously, too, there's so much that has to be done behind the scenes, and I would prefer staff not having to do it twice.
Yeah, I'm not hard-pressed on it being in any matter of time. I mean, expedience is great.
Because you want to get a date that we can.
But I want to have a date to strive for.
Yes, to share with the vendors.
I think in the absence of the date, we're just coasting, and we, we have, we, I mean, a couple million dollars would be nice. And so I don't want to just continue to coast if we can set a date and that is achievable for us to reach towards. Because again, it is just the start of the process. It is not the end of the process by any means.
Right.
Well, and I think that May 28th is very reasonable, because it is fairly close. But also, that gives us basically six weeks to have those things done. And that, if, if the third appraisal is something that becomes a little bit of a holdup, we can sort of light a fire there to try to get that done as soon as possible. And I have no doubts that the firm will be able to work within that timeframe as well to get done what they need. Because at this point, what we mainly need is the title search, and they may tell us another thing we need as well, but they can get that done quickly. Because the question, and operative question, what we go into that meeting for, of the leasing corporation, is specifically to ask for the leasing corporation's permission to proceed forward with sale and closing and those sort of things. We may not have bidders yet, buyers yet, we may not have anything set up yet. The start of that process begins on that day. And then the rest of the process generally progresses quite quickly, once you've got people who are, who are, you know, actual valid buyers who are moving forward.
Sounds good. And I know that you've already made some significant headway so far, so yeah, let's, I'm all for it.
Okay.
So that's us?
Sure. That's great. That was, that was just something I was looking forward to accomplishing. And I've worked with Mr. McGraw closely for years, and he's, he's a great attorney. He's very knowledgeable, very down-to-earth, so he would, he'd be my top pick for a real estate attorney in Marion County. So I was happy to see you share that that was who we were using. I don't really have anything else. Personally, I, to Dr. Campbell's point about Osceola Middle School, my question would be, there are 13 buses at Osceola. How many of those are triple-tiered?
At least eight. At least eight of them. And I only know of the eight for sure, but I think that, I honestly think almost all of them are.
So my question to staff would be, because I'm, I'm not going to, personally, I'm not going to completely get rid of an, of an opportunity that is valid, and it represents what's best for the collective. However, if 50% of the routes, or 60% of the routes are one-way, and it's already working, but the other 40% are not, those 40% represent a disruption that could be more impactful than the impact of not maintaining the existing routes and the triple-tier that exists with the current start times. And so it's about, for me, like the cost aggregate and not about cost money as much as it is like human capital. And so I, I do believe that if that was an option, it would have been brought forward. So we can revisit it, absolutely. I'm fine with revisiting it and having staff revisit it. But I do believe that if it was an option, it would have been brought forward. That's just how I feel in my heart.
Right. Yes, I agree with you. I'm not comfortable making a decision from up here, but I am comfortable saying, hey, was this something that, you know, and maybe it has, and maybe it hasn't, stranger things.
Well, and I, I did, I did reach out to Ms. Dobbins. She said four of the buses are not tiered at OMS. So eight or nine are tiered and four are not. But the purpose of the tier is to eliminate routes and to eliminate the necessity for drivers. So four buses not being tiered would equate to four, essentially four drivers, because they wouldn't be available, they would have to be unique. They're now going to represent a completely unique route.
Well, all the routes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but all, all the routes are going to be unique. And so those four will just be tiered with a middle school that starts at 9:20, is what would happen. Because if we had, you know, I'm presuming that they're.
Looks like they're, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Let's, let's let the heads that are closest to it.
Totally fine.
Yep.
Yeah, no, 100%. I was just sharing that they're not all triple-tiered, so it's not a clean-cut solution.
Sure. But it is the majority, so, thank you.
Right. Sorry, I just, I feel like we're just kind of going down a rabbit hole here. We don't have all of the intricacies of the information, but it's all important, they're all important considerations, you know? I don't think any of us sitting up here are interested in derailing a process, but sometimes things do come up. I don't want to miss on that. All right. Anything else? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no. I mean, I just reiterate, I think that the, the solution that was brought forward the first time was comprehensive and addressed the global needs for our district. That's what I believe to be accurate. So unless overwhelming data shows otherwise, I'm, I'm not going to be incredibly supportive of reopening the wound.
Got it. All righty. Vice Chair Conrad?
Yes, very briefly, I do want to thank our teams today, all of the work that was presented. It's been a busy, long, productive day. But from insurance to all of the charter schools, summer school staffing, and instructional materials for science, we really have covered a lot of ground. And just thank you to everyone that worked on any piece of that. It's very much appreciated. And then I had two questions I'd like just some data on. When we did the third grade reading camp last year, how many participated and how many students were able to move on because they went to camp? So how successful was it? I'd like to know that. And then I'd also like to know, many of our schools are doing the second grade gifted screener. I know some are doing it today and tomorrow. And I would like, we did pilot, we piloted that last summer, is that correct? So out of the students that were screened last summer, what percentage did we have that turned out to be gifted out of that? I'm just, I'm just curious. All right. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Vice Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Conrad. It's getting into the longer part of the day. But he was Vice Chair once before, so, at least. All right. I really don't have anything else, just to, again, extend appreciation and gratitude for everyone that has ridden this journey with us throughout this long day, including everyone up here. I'm just looking forward to getting over, trying to get over to label some Black Stallion books, because there's 3,500 of them. And also, the Acceleration Academy graduation is tonight at 5:00 o'clock over at their site at the Cascades. So that's all I have. And if no one else has anything, for the good of the cause, we will look at a journey at 1:40 p.m. It's before 2:00, which was kind of my goal, so we'll call it a win. All right, thank you, everybody.